Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, March 22, 2018. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming out a little early tonight. Thanks to my committee members too for coming out early. I think I like this 6:30 timeframe.
We should get out earlier.
It's a little tough getting dinner on the table, but I liked it actually. Yes, let's see if we can get out earlier.
That's the intention.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we will start off this evening's meeting with our consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve quite a few meeting minutes. We have regular and executive session minutes of February 8, 2018, negotiation subcommittee minutes of January 30, 2018, superintendent performance goals minutes of February 8, 2018, negotiation subcommittee minutes of February 13, 2018, budget and finance subcommittee minutes of March 12, 2018, and we're going to accept warrants number 36P-18, 38P-18, 35V-18, 37V-18, and 39V-18.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our student rep is not here this evening, but I did want to just say a few things about last evening's spelling bee at the Pembroke School, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade spelling bee, which is sponsored by the PTA as well as Georgetown Record, which the Record has been a partner since inception, which is great. They do a great job with coming together partnering that great event. So Cheryl, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for including all of us in the night because it is such a special night. It was great seeing so many volunteers, their parent and children, because the children were there with the pizza, setting up the pizza thing, and it's great to see them take, you know, part in that as 6th graders, right? And there were tons of volunteers.
Well, and it was really a team that came together. So Elizabeth Devere, Heather Shapenko, Heather Forgioni, Erin Duggan was involved as well, Jamie Robesha. So it was everybody did their part.
Yeah, did their part, which is great. Tonight was wonderful. The kids, and I say it all the time how great the kids do getting up there in front of, you know, their peers and their family members. And it's hard getting up on stage and doing that.
And knowing those words.
Yeah.
They're pretty tough.
They did great. And I love the fact that the children still like give their friends high fives and, you know, pat them on the back when they sat down and they were a little distraught. But that was very nice to see that camaraderie there, you know, and kind of cheering them on like, "You'll get them next time." So that's good. But you did a fantastic job.
Thanks.
And so did all the people that you mentioned.
Can I make some comments? Since Chloe's not here, I'll be close.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. So last week was the frolic, and hearing from all the kids, they said it was one of the best frolics.
Oh, good.
That they stayed much longer than they have in the previous years. The food was catered, and it was, they enjoyed that. They loved the DJ.
So important.
They just, yeah. So it was a success.
Oh, that's good.
That's great.
They really enjoyed it. And then next Friday, Thursday is the catwalk for cancer, so that'll be next Thursday. I think it's 6 o'clock.
I'm not sure what time it is, but it's a Thursday, and there's not a school committee meeting, so that's good.
Yes.
That's good.
And tonight is the parent teacher conferences.
Conferences, yeah. At both schools.
And I invite the teachers to come here when they're done.
And we can have the conference.
That's good.
A little more fun.
That's good. And spring sports started, which is nice, even though we have snow on the ground.
Yes.
But it's good that the weather.
We did clear some off the turf.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, so that was good.
You managed to get a lacrosse coach.
We did.
Just in time.
I know.
Good.
And they had the middle school.
Don't ruin the surprise.
Don't ruin the surprise. I didn't save boys or girls. Just have a lacrosse coach.
And then they had, the middle school had their spirit week the last week. So today they had a, like a, it was like a pep rally kind of thing. And it was really, it was very interesting. Mr. Lucio actually always emcees the tug-of-war. So it was the 7th graders versus the 8th graders. But when he came in, he took his coat off, and then they informed him that he was not going to be the judge, that he was going to be the anchor on the 8th grade team. And then Tim Larson was the anchor on the 7th grade team.
Oh, funny.
Mr. Lucio's team won. So he was very happy. I actually have a picture of it, you know.
Oh, that's good.
Where he was with his white shirt and his, you know, loafers.
That's good.
It was good, and the kids had it. The kids liked to see that. And, yeah, they had, the first, this year they had something very different. They had a little trivia. So they had kids sitting in a group of, I don't know, six or seven kids, and they gave a, the emcee gave a question, and then they had to, as a group, come up with the answer to the question, you know, put their board up, and, you know, so they kept track of it. It was really fun. I mean, I like to see some academic thing thrown in there. So they really, then they had a dodgeball game after school. And so it was just a nice culmination of, I'll probably something on my blog about it, because it's like the community building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was really, it was really fun. Mr. Sherender did a lot of work putting it together. And he actually emailed me this morning, said, "I know this is late notice, but if you want to come over at 11," you know. So I did. I made arrangements to do it, because it was really fun to see the kids having such a great time. And the teachers having such a great time with the kids. That's always nice to see.
Right. And the kids have the day off tomorrow.
Yes, they do.
Teachers, staff do not, but the kids do.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for the input there. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Okay. We're going to first hear from Mike Anderson. If you could come on up. I changed the agenda around a little guy. I see you already looking over there.
It's all right. I just wanted to see if I'm last.
No, you'll be next.
We could arrange it.
It's your punishment. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Hi, Mike. How's it going?
It's going good.
So you're here to talk about a few things.
Yeah, joint maintenance and school security.
Right. Right. So let's talk about school security first, and we can talk a little bit about the forum that was held this week. I was happy to see the amount of parents and staff, a few students that attended. That was good to see.
Yeah, it was a good turnout, I thought.
It was a good turnout.
And a lot more people watched it, too.
Yes.
I think that Facebook Live, while we have to work out some of the bugs, people were raving about having the opportunity to.
View it from home.
To view it from home, in real time.
Yeah, and not wait for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. A lot of discussion occurred. A lot of information was shared. Ideas were put out there. So let's talk about what we plan on doing to.
Sure.
Make sure the safety is at its best.
So we're going to start implementing some things right away that we can do at minimal cost. Over April vacation, we're going to stop building the walls, because we have all the metal studs from the senior center left over that we can use to put the walls up. So it'll just be the cost of the sheet rock. And then after the Maytown meeting, if, you know, if we receive the funding, we're going to buy the security doors. So there'll be just an opening in the wall. But that will speed things up quite a bit, because when you put a pre-hung door in, it's just a matter of a few hours. It's not an all-day project.
Right.
And then we, we're going to start locking the doors at Pearlie around near the senior center, in that hallway, because we've worked it out with the preschool teachers, how they can redirect the students.
Perfect.
So they won't have to go in that way.
Yep.
And we're going to keep the doors shut on the kiosk entranceway, just to deter people from going in. We can't lock them yet, because there's no way to buzz them open and closed.
Okay.
But that's one of the things we're doing.
It's okay. If they're locked, it basically is saying.
Yeah.
So they'll go right, they'll be directed right to the secretary there.
Yeah. And then Suzanne and I wrote up a bunch of pricing and things for the things we need. But if we receive the funding, we'll be able to put panic buttons in all the buildings that will release all the hallway doors to shut and lock. So like, for example, Pembroke already has it. So if you were in the lobby and that was pushed, the only place that you could go is out the front door, out the stairway door into the playground. You couldn't go down to any of the academic wings. And so we have the capability of doing that at all the schools with the right, like, computer software program and tying that all into the fire magnets on each door.
Okay.
So that's something our guys are going to do the work, the electrician we hired, and the regular maintenance guys. So it'll be a savings that way. So the cost of the equipment for that is like, I think it was like $7,000. So it's small money for that kind of thing, because any way you can slow somebody down is a good thing.
Right.
And some other things we're working on is, well, we talked about it at the meeting, but was the door monitoring? So if an outside door is open, we'll get an alert. And.
And can you, so you can set the amount of time?
Yeah, so you could do a minute. You could do, we already have that at Pembroke now. So like, in the morning, when they, when the aide stands at the kindergarten entrance to let the kids in, like, I get a bunch of alerts on my phone saying.
Okay.
Open, but I know at 8:40 exactly what it is.
That's what it is.
Yeah. So that's what we'll do. We'll set all the doors.
And then who else gets the alerts, other than you?
Right now at Pembroke, I'm the only one. But we've, we're going to expand that as part of our plan. So we're going to include the secretaries, Margaret, Hope, and the custodians.
Okay.
Because we've got to rely on the custodians as.
And then are the doors numbered?
All the doors are numbered in all the buildings.
So it says, like, door 15?
Yeah.
So they have to be aware of.
And they start at the front door, and they go clockwise, 1, 2, 3, 4, right around the building.
So it's easily, it's easy to figure out which.
Which is what doors are opening.
Okay.
If you ever look, the doors have a number right on them, if you ever noticed at the school.
Okay.
I don't, do you want me to talk about this?
Well, why don't we just, so we're meeting the secretaries tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
At 9 o'clock.
Yeah.
And the custodians.
And the custodians.
And what we're going to basically do is talk with them about, you know, so what the procedure needs to be. The conversation we were having this morning is, you know, eventually we want to buy that.
Lobby guard.
Lobby guard. And everybody will require, be required to show your ID. So the discussion we were having today is, do we say, you know, effective such and such a date, when you come to the school, you know, you will be required to identify yourself and your reason for being there, and then you will be required to show an ID when you sign in? Or do we say, you have to identify yourself, why you're there, come in, sign in. If we know you, you don't have to show an ID. But if we don't know you, then you need to show an ID. So the question is, do we transition it in until we get the lobby guard? Or do we just say, okay, effective this date, so don't forget your ID? You know, when you come in, you have to, you know, because we're also thinking about the, how it will work for the secretaries, right? You know, in terms of what, all the other things they're trying to do.
I think that's my question in terms of a staffing perspective, because I know when I've gone in, very friendly and nice, but as I'm signing in the book, they're sort of moving on to whatever their next thing is.
That's right.
How self-service is that going to be? Or is the secretary going to have to take that entire minute? And I know that doesn't sound like a long time, but if there are a bunch of guests on a certain time, how self-serve is that going to be?
Right. So that's why I think we want to talk about that with the secretaries. What would their concerns be? You know, how would, how could and would that really work? I mean, I think the lobby guard, I think, I've seen different versions of it. You know, I've been in schools where literally I have to put my license under the magnet, and then I have to, you know, write something, sign in and out. And no one necessarily does that for me. And then there's others that, you know, literally somebody's sitting there, you know, gives you the badge and makes sure that they operate the system. So.
I think that's what we have to decide, because you can set it up any way you want.
Is it cost prohibitive to have a detector?
Okay, so that's the next thing we're going to talk about with you.
Can I just back up for one second?
Of course.
So I guess the other thing that I think we're all, we all have done is, you know, hold the door for someone.
Yes.
So are we not going to do that? So one person gets buzzed in, you have to close the door?
Yeah, I think that's something we need to remind all the parents about.
Margaret has her hand raised.
Well, I just want to jump in.
Yeah.
I am going to send out in my this week, a reminder that a couple years ago, I had said that we all want our children to be polite, and we all want to be polite to one another. But that to ask people not to hold the door for the person behind you, that you do have to just say, and everyone has to know they're going to let the door close and then be buzzed in.
Right. So if someone comes up together to it, you know, buzzes it, then I think that, you know.
Right. And, you know, why are you both here?
Right. You know, if you want to do it at the same time.
At the same time.
But I just, I want to raise, I want to raise another point that we need to think about. At arrival in the morning, there are many parents in the school who come in with their children who do not sign in.
Right.
So I think that, you know, when we're looking at that security, we were aiming at that best-case scenario in the protocol that works the best, but forgetting at that arrival time, there are so many parents that are just in, that don't sign in, they're not buzzed in. And so I think when you're meeting, that, if that could be a part of that conversation.
So is a solution to that, we did talk about this, is a solution to that, that we don't, that none of, so I think you're talking about like the kindergarten comes in, like the side door?
Bus children come in the side, kindergarten come in the side, and even, I mean, even coming in the front. If a child is tardy, parents come in with them. So there are, there are many, many parents in the school in the morning that we do not know are there.
Right. So I think we do have to think about that. I mean, I think our solution was everybody has to come in the front. So even if you get dropped off on the side, you got to come in the front. But it does make, you know, but you could have a line out the door, you know.
That would be, so imagine.
For each student, you mean? Would have to go in through the, like, 40 kids get off a bus, and they have to.
Well, that's the question, right? So if they get off the bus, can they just go out, if it's just them, they just go out to the playground? No?
But remember, they have to go through the school. The older children have to go through the school to get out to the playground. Parents wait with the youngers. So the door is going to be open, parents come in.
Okay. We have to talk about that, because I'm not quite sure how that would work.
We might have to see it. Where are we picturing the lobby guard going?
In the office.
Yeah, I should say.
Okay. The lobby guard would go in the office. Well, again, so let's segue into the next discussion. So as, you were all at the forum, and thank you all for being there. You heard a number of people asking about metal detectors. Now, that wasn't in our original plan. We're not sure that it's necessary. But again, I guess I'm feeling like, if it's what the, if the decision is made, and it's what the community wants in their schools, and it's an overwhelming, you know, like the chief said, you know, I'll support it if that's what it looks like. So just so that we're all prepared for that discussion, not that we're recommending it, but that we're prepared for that discussion, Mike did a little homework for us on metal detect, I mean, yeah, detectors. So you would, you would walk in the door, and they'd be affixed above the main doors, basically. So it's just like you're walking in a thicker, you know, a thicker wall, a thicker doorway. And then, so you have that on your table, right? We put that together for you. So, you know, you can't really have that kind of security if you don't have somebody to man it, right? So, you know, you can see that we would need six, we would need six detectors, right, Mike?
Two at each school.
Two at each school.
Yeah, everybody going through it.
On the front door only, right? And then you'd buy the wand. And then, again, we don't really have, I don't think it's reasonable or realistic to expect, like, the principals or assistant principals or secretaries or custodians to do the job of security in that way.
Yeah, I don't think Guy wants assistant principal slash AD slash security guard.
I'm all for it.
It's amazing what that guy can handle.
But anyway, so we priced out, you know, what would the cost be of a security guard at each school? And.
Are they armed?
They can or cannot be.
Okay.
I think the chief, I don't think that's what the chief is envisioning, because, you know, the chief is, you know, and we have all decided to support as best we can, at least a discussion about an additional school resource officer, so having one resource officer in each school. So that's the, sort of, the armed presence, right? The security guard would be someone who would, there'd be a shift 1, and then a shift at the 2 to 10 or something, because our buildings are used so much at night. And we talked about, there'd have to be some flexibility, because at night, if we don't have an activity, we don't really need to have a security guard sitting there. So there would have to be some flexibility. But just so, if we're talking to the Board of Selectment, or we're talking to FinCom, if that's something that the town really feels strongly about, you know, we'll at least have a cost of that. And as you can see, it's a, $245,000 is the cost, really, to do what that would be required.
And then I broke it down by building, like, if you only wanted to do the high school.
Right. Yeah, we could, yeah, it could be a menu, right?
Yeah.
But that's the worst-case scenario. So.
Logistically, it would be a challenge, because then 700 kids are going through one, two doors.
Two doors, right.
Like.
Yeah.
Well, and would backpacks have to be checked?
Well, I think that, again, we'd have to, we hadn't planned on having kids have to, so they have to take their backpacks off. I mean, we can set the threshold for the sensitivity of the.
Yeah, what I read is you can set the sensitivity for what you want. If someone sets it off, they stand on the side and get jacked or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, with all of these things, there's logistical situations, like Margaret just identified, you know, here's the goal of, you know, managing the front door. And then, you know, she just told us about a situation that we'd have to think about.
I just wonder the sensitivities of winding a 2nd grader.
I know, I know.
A 10th grader is one thing, a 2nd grader, a kindergarten.
Could be traumatic.
And, you know, it might just have been some of the people at the, at the meeting that felt really strongly about it. You know, we sort of feel like this could be a community decision, right? I mean, it really is worth the conversation with the community on it, because, you know, that would be a big departure from, you know, where most people are.
And I think what they're thinking is, is that most of the weapons that came in through the schools were in backpacks. You know, they were concealed within.
Yes.
You know, and so it's easy to let someone in that looks like a student, or, you know.
Yeah. And, but, you know, obviously, if the backpack went through and there was something in it, you know, it would be, but the question would be, how would you have to, like, hold your, I don't know the logistics of it. We'd have to learn about that. But just so, you know, I know the FinCom, not the FinCom, the Board of Selectment is, you know, starting to look at, you know, maybe how some of the funding could occur. So we thought it would be good to just have all the information, so, you know, it can be all-in. Or maybe, you know, that cost is not in the ballpark, or maybe it's a phased-in project.
I don't know.
Was your salary cost, this is hiring a company, so it's not this plus benefits and all that? Or would these be?
I got these rates based off of school postings, security postings.
Okay.
I base it as school employees.
Right.
As school employees.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
But I guess maybe, Mike, how would we go about costing, like, if that versus, you know, a security company?
Yeah, you could definitely do that, yeah.
Just to have a comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could look into that.
Because these would be full FTEs. So they'd be benefited.
Or you got a 45-plus-plus versus, I mean, it's going to net out the same. You're paying the benefits either way, essentially, but.
Right.
Yeah.
What does it take to install them?
Just an electrician to wire them in place.
Really?
Yeah.
So I know, like.
It's something you wanted to go for, like, the town meeting soon, so that's why.
Exactly, right.
You want to have the information.
Yeah. I know, like, schools like Lawrence don't have metal detectors, but they have the wands, and they use those.
Could you just have a wand without the whole?
And they use those without.
I think how time-consuming that would be, though.
Just think about that, if you want every kid to come through.
Yeah, they just do, like, random searches. Like, they don't do it every day.
So you could do that, but you'd still want a security guard.
To perform it.
Yeah.
And I tried, I tried finding schools in Massachusetts that currently have them, and I didn't have luck.
Security guards or metal detectors?
The metal detectors. I mean, I didn't do it, you know, in a.
You'd be surprised that there, you'd be surprised at the few that are, that have them.
Like, maybe Boson.
But there's a lot of conversation, like, on the superintendent's listserv, you know, how many of you have metal detectors?
Oh, no, they're talking about it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of districts are talking about it, because I've been reading it. And Nancy thinks maybe Everett has them.
Okay.
Or who's talking about them.
Yeah, who's talking about them.
It's interesting. I mean, the material cost is not much.
Yeah.
It's all labor.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but you'd need someone fixed to monitor.
Oh, yeah, for sure. But, yeah, I mean, the actual device is all in.
Yeah. I mean, $6,000, and it probably lasts 10-plus years.
So I think somebody mentioned earlier, you know, and I said, oh, we're going to talk about that in a minute, maybe with Suzanne. So if you had a security guard, you know, would their job be to literally have a table in the lobby, and, you know, you come in, you show, you know, you go through the lobby guard, and so it doesn't even affect the secretaries, right? Again, everything is sort of like, all the little balls are in the air, and depending on which balls fall down, you figure out what your plan is. But if we were going to employ security guards all day, you know, the morning would obviously be, you know.
Busy, right?
Busy, and then maybe walking, you know, walking to make sure, you know, that things are secure around the building. But other than that, you know, maybe having somebody literally, you know, sitting there, you know, signing people in.
It would certainly be a relief for the office staff, and they'd be focused on exactly where this person's going.
Right. So is there a way we can include the students, too, in this conversation, in terms of how they would feel about this?
Yeah, I was thinking about that the other day, actually. We hadn't really talked to students about it.
How could we do that? Could we do, like, a Survey Monkey?
Yeah, we could survey them.
I mean, would you want to survey them, or would you want to try to have a conversation with them? Would we want to have an assembly to talk about, you know, things that we're doing around safety in the schools?
And allow them, like, a Q and A.
And just allow them to do a Q and A.
And follow it with a survey, I think would be appropriate.
Maybe we can work on that.
Yeah, I think it's important to include them.
I do, too. And one of the things we are talking about, like, is the, working with the staff as well, right? So we're going to meet with the secretaries and custodians, because they're, they're sort of the.
The face.
The face, right? They're the first line. But, you know, we've already started talking a little bit to the faculty members. Peter and Guy and Heidi, one of the faculty members, one of the faculty meetings, we started talking about security when we're talking about, at the same time we're ending NIOSC, and we were talking about the 14th, the walkout day. But we did, we actually, some of the teachers walked over and actually physically saw what we were planning to do in the lobby. But again, once we know what we're going to do, we absolutely need to go to faculty meetings and, you know, talk to, talk to the staff about it as well.
But I think particularly with the students, a survey is a good idea, because you're going to have some kids that are going to feel very comfortable speaking up, and others who absolutely wouldn't.
Yeah, you're right.
And you want to know how everybody feels.
Feels, yeah. But I don't know, I mean, it's always tricky, right? Because when people complete a survey, they almost always have some kind of an expectation that you're going to do what they think. So if the majority of people say, no, we wouldn't, we don't want metal detectors, but if the consensus of the, of the town is that, in order for us to feel safe sending our kids to school, that we want to put them in, I don't, I don't want I don't, I don't want there to be any mis, I think we should talk to the students and get their Q and A and get their thoughts. And I'm sure Guy could come up with a very simple, simple. But I think it's a question, it's not necessarily, do you want? It's got to be the kind of questions where we're getting.
How would you feel?
If they're, how would they feel if we did this, what would your concern?
Survey the parents too?
What would your concerns be?
Yeah, because I mean, at the forum, it was, there was a, a large, uh, the majority of the people.
Supported it, yeah.
Supported it, but, I mean, you know, that's a small, that's.
That's a small section.
Simulation of the school, so yeah, I do think.
Okay, so we can work on a, we can work on a survey that we can, that we can send out.
If you're really for it though, and I don't mean to speak out of place, but the warrant closes for the, to selectmen close the warrant. So you would want to put a placeholder in.
Well, we, we would talk about that on Monday.
Yeah, we go into the selectmen meeting on Monday, so hopefully we can get a good timeline, a realistic timeline so that.
When it opens and closes, yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Cause they open it and they close it pretty rapidly.
I know, right, I know.
Nice to control that.
Yeah.
That calendar.
Yeah, we will, we'll talk to them on Monday about.
Yeah, that's why we really hard tried to get like this in place because we, we know it's a missed opportunity. Even if it doesn't happen, this year it's a missed opportunity to not at least put it on the radar screen. And again, it's coming from the community, not necessarily from us.
Right, right, right. So I appreciate you, Mike, um, getting all this information rather quickly.
Yeah.
So thank you for, for doing that on top of everything else that you're doing. Um, I saw a, I had seen a few things, um, out there about when is the forum going to happen? So I know you don't have anything etched in stone, but you're working on a date.
Pembroke?
Correct.
Oh, I do have that, I do have that information I was going to tell you about. So Margaret and I talked about it today. We're going to, um, do that on April tenth, the night of April tenth, which is a Tuesday night.
Okay.
You know, we'll do six thirty to eight, you know, in that ballpark, obviously if it goes a little longer, but you know, we, you know, we want to make sure that it's a productive conversation, right? If we always have to schedule another one, we will, but, um, we start at six thirty. Um, and then Margaret and I are talking with the faculty on the fourth, which is the next PD day in the afternoon for a little bit of time to just kind of, uh, share some of the concerns that works were raised and discussion points that were raised at the forum. And, you know, kind of, you know, just take stock and, you know, kind of look at, you know, how consistent are we? How do we handle all these things? What, what role does the teacher play now in it? You know, just what, what, how does, how do the consequences lay out? You know, even though as Margaret tried very hard to explain that, you know, there's not a one size fits all discipline. You know, there are some things that always get a consequence or some kind of discipline, but it's not always exactly the same depending on the circumstances. But I think parents just kind of want to get a sense of exactly, you know, what, what is in place and, you know, how are certain situations handled? Uh, but we are, I, that blog that I'm going to send out, uh, I actually wrote a, a section in there, uh, about, you know, would be very helpful if people that plan to come to the discussion, uh, have, you know, issues or discussion points. They want to make sure, you know, bigger discussion points that they want to cover or they want to see covered. It'd be good if we could know that in advance, just so we can make sure that A, we're, you know, it's, it meets people's needs, but also we can be prepared to, to have the conversation so it can be like a, a good exchange of information and ideas and thoughts.
So if anyone wants to submit questions in advance too.
That'll be in my blog, I'll, I'll, I'll put that in.
Okay. Good. Does anybody have any other questions about?
Well, the things we're doing for security is we, we reminding everyone about their photo ID.
Uh, where is it, Mike? Did I already lose it? Well, Mike made me my badge today, I've already lost it.
And, uh, we set up a, a page on the website just for security.
Oh, yes.
We're going to be posting, as we do through projects, we're going to post them and, you know, let people know what's.
When Mike puts the walls up, we'll take a picture of the wires and post it up there. So it, it says, security updates. Um, again, I'm putting that in my blog that, that people should go to look there if they want to continually see. And, and I remind people it's a work in progress, but if there are particular things that they want to see up there, they should just drop us a note and we'll, we'll work with them on that. But obviously we can't, you know, how many cameras we have, where the cameras are located, that's not the information that's going up there. But, you know, we're putting, you know, the work has started on the foyer at the middle high school, you know, that, that kind of thing, you know. Um, the stuff that I feel like we can post and people will be. Right. Able to follow the progress.
How long is that going to take, Mike? To go up on April vacation?
Yeah, it'll go up on April vacation. And I said, you know, we're just building a stud wall, but this wall is going to be reinforced. It's going to be a real security wall, so, I don't mean, I'm not going to go into great detail, but it's, we're going to make sure that no one can get through it.
Right. And then the other wall that is, that goes towards the guidance.
It'll be a solid wall.
To the, to the ceiling.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be pretty high, but not all the way because we don't want to block.
It's like you can't scale it, but it's not going to.
Correct.
Mr. Lucius said he could.
Yeah, he could jump it.
He could jump it if he got on Mr. Prescott's back.
He just throws that suit jacket off again, like, tug of war and he can.
I'd like to see that. Mike will take pictures.
Yeah.
Um, so the only other thing I wanted to just mention quickly is I know there's discussion about, you know, the idea of maybe, you know, having a, you know, kind of a community task force, you know, that would, that could, could expand our expertise. You know, the, the thought, again, the chief and I and Mike and Suzanne were involved in the discussion too, was, um, that it would be a group of people that would be convened, um, who would volunteer their time. It would be a working group of people to, to basically accomplish some very specific tasks, but it would be advisory in nature to us. Uh, it wouldn't be, um, the school committee always has the end authority to anything, any decisions that have to do with things that change the scope of the school buildings and, um, you know, something as important as security, you know, you would always vote on anything related to that. I don't envision this group being a voting group with any authority. I see them as being advisory, uh, to us. So if there are a couple of people in town who, you know, are security experts or, um, you know, who are public relations experts or, you know, people who, you know, are interested in school security, um, you know, they could, and we'll have to number, get the, we'll see what the interest is and then figure out the number, right? Um, but it would be basically, uh, the goal would be to, to help work with us and kind of feed us information about, uh, you know, the manual that we want to create. And we, we can, we can draw from a lot of things we already have. Uh, for example, you know, we have crisis manuals, Guy and Heidi update them every year. What we don't have is a threat protocol in that, so, you know, might be adding to that. Um, you know, as the chief showed you, NEMLEC has a whole threat protocol, right? So there's a lot of different things we have and our thought is we want to create one document that sort of pulls, you know, all those things together. And in there it might be, there'll be a communication protocol, like, so, you know, how, if, if this happens, this happens. If this happens, this happens. So it really was just to kind of bring in some additional expertise, people who are interested in it, just kind of help us think about, uh, you know, how the community might be able to help us inform the process. That's really what the intention of it was. I think that's a great idea. Now, would this be like an advisory committee, sort of like the health and wellness or a parent advisory council that you, you don't post it? It wouldn't be posted?
Uh, we, we weren't thinking it was going to be, you know, uh, but I think we could probably like up on the safety page. If there were going to be minutes, you know, if we were minutes of the meetings that we could share, we would certainly post it on the.
Health and wellness committee, there are minutes, it's, you know, people take minutes, it's just not part of it.
Not an official.
And it is open, I mean, people can, you know, come to it.
People can come, oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's not one of those postable meetings.
Yeah, as I said, I think it was a way to sort of look at the, look at the issues from the community's point of view as well. You know, maybe we don't have our handle on that quite as well as maybe we need to and we're not a security experts, you know. So, you know, is there a way to, to do that? I mean, maybe we don't have to come, come, set up a whole other group, but that was our thought, was just to, you know, have a, a group as an out, as an outgrowth of, you know, the forums and the interest people have in this. And we know we have, we promised we were going to get a set of protocols, so we just thought it would be a, a way to be a little more inclusive, but also really help us out with areas that we might not know enough about.
So the members would be, uh, you'd be looking for school committee members?
Well, we talked about school committee members, people from town, it, I said including, but, you know, you don't have to. If you don't want to have representatives, you don't have to. But I was thinking school committee, maybe member of the board of selectmen, um, you know, a few parents, you know, hopefully some experts will come forward, you know, so a couple of staff members, you know, might, might be administration, a teacher or two, you know, even a student, you know, I just want to see what the interest is, you know, at this point. I mean, we certainly don't want a fifty member committee because you don't get much done when you do that. But I don't know that we would get that, right? I mean, I think.
Probably not. So my only concern would be the confidential information that would be, you know, shared, whether it would be like particular school, um, situations that, you know, normally wouldn't be.
In the public.
In the public or, you know, people wouldn't be privy to that because we want to just make sure that we stand by the confidentiality.
So maybe what we could do is have a confidentiality agreement that people that got on it sign, you know, that just basically says, these are the parameters, you know, under which, you know, you're joining this committee.
And it wouldn't be a longstanding committee, you're not thinking.
No, that's when I'm not necessarily thinking that. I mean, if it got to be something that was really helpful in town and we could meet quarterly, you know, to just help review things, I mean, maybe that, that's fine, but I think at this point it's just, we're trying to just start something that allows the conversation to continue, allows us to get some really good work done, um, and, uh, you know, offer some expertise to us that perhaps we could use without having to out and pay a lot of money for it.
I think the question that I had was, we and their, and their subcommittees of the, of the school committee, which I get, but we have a security or a safety.
We do.
Subcommittee.
We do.
We have a PR committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I certainly understand that meeting on Tuesdays at ten o'clock in the morning is not convenient.
I know it.
Um, but, I mean, I know we spent, when I was on the committee for two years, we spent a long time working out a communications policy or framework, I don't remember what word we used. It seems a little bit like a safety subcommittee should be talking about this. And, and maybe it's a matter of scheduling those meetings at more.
Convenient times.
Convenient times serves the same purpose.
Yeah.
Um, rather than creating a new entity and then, then what is safety talking about if they're not? You know, if this group is talking about safety and this group is talking about safety, who owns what? And like, what's that relationship?
Yeah. No, I can see that. I think we were looking for a committee that was, with multiple stakeholders, you know, meeting on, uh, to, to accomplish, you know, these written protocols, uh, communication plan. So it was a little bit different than, you know, kind of what our safety subcommittee is. It's kind of like, we're talking about sort of internal things.
Bus.
Bus things.
Issues.
But, but again, I, I'm not opposed to it, I just think it's, I just think it's kind of an important thing right now to, I think it's a timely thing and a kind of an important thing to at least think about, whatever structure we create. Um.
Well, it almost sounds to me like public relations.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, well, it's like a cross between.
Yes.
But are you, you're looking for like expertise like that gentleman who got up and said, you know, I, I work in the security field and I have these ideas and, you know.
And even public relations, I mean, we aren't public relations experts, right? So, you know, we could see if people could come and do it or we could, we could invite them, but that's two, that's two meetings, you know. So I, I hear that, we don't want a duplication of effort.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I think my other, just your comment before about, you know, the survey, people take a survey and.
Yeah, they have an expectation.
Eighty-two percent say this. I, I'm mindful of, you know, an advisory committee, while they wouldn't have necessarily voting power, not that that matters, the, the implications that that could provide or, or cause.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think they, they know they're, you know, they're basically advising us, right? So ultimately, they know that we are, we may not agree, but if we're working along the process, along the way, you know, I would hope that, you know, there'd be a consensus as opposed to, it's kind of like what I, like when we did the technology committee, right? We had, you know, experts from the technology field who are on it, we had.
From the community.
Community, um, they, we had teachers, we had administrators and they produced a technology plan. That's kind of what it was. And then, you know, brought that forward to, basically to those of us who were, you know, run overseeing it and then the school committee ultimately approved it. So I don't see it as being a lot different than that, but, but again, I, I'm just, I just, I guess I'm just trying to respond a little bit to what I heard at the, with the community that they have a need and want more information. But I, you know, I'm always not sure what information, you know.
Right.
They really need and best way to find that out is to talk to the people who are asking for it, right? So, but I, you know, I don't want, I, I, I don't want to put it out on a blog and ask for volunteers if it really isn't something that we're all comfortable doing, you know. So that's why, you know, I wanted to check in with you today before I posted the blog. So, um, I don't know what, what, what are we thinking about that? I mean, I also can post the blog without that in it and do that separately. I mean, I don't want us to rush if we really don't think it's a good idea, but, you know, I know when the chief and I got the email from, I got an email from a parent and I thought, geez, you know, that, that's worth at least thinking about, right? And.
And did that parent want to help?
Yes, he, he basically said, I, I have expertise in this and I'd be happy to help you. So, you know, so that was, but I thought, hmm, that's kind of interesting. And he said, you know, I know I got some other people that I can pull in.
Right.
As well, so.
Okay. Well, the, the duplication and then the confidentiality, I think was my, my biggest thing. I mean, I think if you do, you know, just once you have a committee formed and you explain the, um, the importance of that.
Oh, absolutely.
That would, right. Oh, yeah, suffice.
Cause I, I agree one hundred percent. I, you know, I mean, I said at all the meetings, we don't want to have people like doing something and then somebody going to another meeting and, you know, undoing what's being done there and then there's this, you know, I guess the advantage, because I go to all the meetings is maybe that would be easier for me to try to avoid.
I mean, since it's so specifically focused on, on the safety and security plan. Now, and, and, you know, then my question is also for the, is it mostly about the schools? Or if Chief Cudmore is seeing this as more of a town, why?
He's seeing it as a community, we're seeing it as a community task force about school safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You asked me that earlier and I thought, I better make sure I, but that's, that's how we were thinking about it.
I didn't know if he was picturing something for Tressa Way or for other areas.
No, no.
Okay.
And I also thought it would be also another group that could help maybe, you know, network and advocate for, you know, what we, what we need. And maybe somebody who could be a little voice of reason, like, I know people want metal detectors because they're, they're fearful, but, you know, you might have people that are in the security field saying, you know, this is the downside to those things and, you know.
Or, you know, let's, let's just try to have the, the guard that other, what is that other thing called?
The lobby.
Lobby guard first and see if that meets our needs and, you know, just move forward.
Yeah.
Step by step.
I mean, you guys will make the ultimate decisions. I, I assure you of that, that that's not, that's not, this is not designed to sort of, sort of take any power or authority away from the school committee's decision making. You are the decision makers on this. This, this would be just, you know, we have to do this work, it would be more hands to do the work potentially and it might, it might be just, it might be a better product at the end when, when we, when we are hearing from people who maybe make this living at doing something. That's kind of what I'm, that's what I see the, the value. And then there'll, I'm sure there'll be just parents who are very interested in school security, who don't know anything about school security, but, you know, it is important to hear from them too as to what they're worried about or what makes sense to them.
Concerns and ideas. I mean, it doesn't, I know it's safety and public relations, but it, because it's so specifically focused on your, your task, the goals at hand, it does not sound like it overlaps with what we already have.
And I mean, I can make sure that, that information is shared between all the groups too, you know. It, it wouldn't be, I don't think it'd be that hard to do.
Okay, and it's not, it's not that we're appointing a committee anyways.
No, I don't think so because it's just a little task force, you know? And I don't think the board of selectmen has to do it. I mean, I think it's, I, yeah, I just think it's a.
Task force that.
Cause I mean, it's an operations issue and we're just trying to, we're just trying to.
Operations.
Figure out, you know, how we can put it, to put together a plan that, you know, it represents the best practices and engages the community and, you know, moves us forward. I mean, that's really the.
So what do you guys think about that? Have any?
Well, I do think it's a good idea in terms of engaging the community because we, we want to hear what they have to say and we care what they have to say. So I think that's answering some of the comments, ideas, thoughts that were just shared the other night. Um, I do worry a little bit about the size of the group because if we're talking about school committee, a board of selectmen, parents with expertise, students, teacher.
We might not get, we might not get any of those, but, you know.
Right. So I just.
Might be two, it might be twenty.
Right, I just be careful of, you know.
Are you going to cap it or are you going just to invite?
I don't know, I think at this point, I think we should just see what we get. Because, you know, sometimes people have, you know, good ideas, but they don't have time. They don't have the time to do it, right? So it'd be a question, and there, there are also some people that, you know, they don't want to go to, to meetings if they don't know that they can contribute either, you know, so. I, and again, I wouldn't think that that group would necessarily work in isolation. That's why I think we, we want this page on the website, you know, to be able to put the information up or continue, you know, give, the minutes would come to the school committee so you could be aware of, you know, it's one, or maybe one of the members, whoever's on the committee can report it back. You know, I, I don't think it, it's not a, the committee to work in isolation, you know.
Right. You're in the sa, you're on the safety committee now, right?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever been on the safety committee?
I've attended a few meetings.
Have you?
As a.
No. I haven't been on the committee, but I've attended a meeting.
Okay.
Because it's always in the morning?
Yeah, it's in the morning.
I know, at the time is tough.
Thanks. Okay. All right.
So, okay, so I got the three issues that you want to make sure.
I think I'm just mindful of, and, and it's part of the broader conversation, as things relate to budget. I guess I'm, I am, I am mindful of an advisory committee saying, we need to do X, Y, and Z. And then coming back on the budget side, absolutely understand that the community thinks we should do X, Y, and Z and get it. But how to balance it with, we also need to teach kids in classrooms, like
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you had a budget for, you know, if you said, here's the budget and
But the reality is The reality is that budget is not
No, that's why I think, that's why I think security is going to need to be discussed, you know, when the board of selectmen do. I mean, if they talk about, let's just say they added a school resource officer, or let's say, security guards. Where, I mean, they have to understand that if that's a recurring cost that has to come into our budget, we can't do it. If there's going to be some kind of a budget established through, you know, I don't know if they do a, a debt exclusion, I don't know what the plan would be. Um, but, you know, is there a, is there a, a little account for, you know, security? You know, that somehow rests somewhere in the town budget? Because as we know, what will happen is it will compete. If now all of a sudden these things get added to our budget, our budget's going to go up seven percent. And then we're going to be cutting essential services in our schools in order to accommodate for that, that's not the, that's not the goal.
Or it'll be funded for three years.
Yeah.
And then we have to cut, you know, on the town side, something happens and suddenly, well, we've had a security guard for three years and we can't get rid of them.
Well, that's the conversation that I think, that's the conversation that I think has to be had with the, on Monday with the board of selectmen. And the thing coming, it has to be a, you know, really a townwide, you know, commitment to it.
Right, right, because our budget just can't handle that.
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so shared maintenance. Mike.
Oh, you're standing.
You stand for this.
I'm half it up.
So, so this is, this is the, Michael served on this group.
Yep.
Um, Mike Farrell, um, Mike, Suzanne, myself. And, um, I think this, you saw, I think, an initial draft of this at one point.
Yep.
Yeah, so really there, there's nothing substantially new that the school committee wouldn't have seen, except the part you guys added about the prioritization.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the only thing that was new. So you, yeah, so you would have to
So my, well, my first question though to, to Mike is, that, this is doable?
Right. I believe it is doable, yes.
I know you do a lot of work now.
So I think when we met, we, I might have explained it to Michael, um, the equation we used to figure out square footage versus manpower. So I, if you take the town buildings that we're going to be taking care of and you add one person.
Yep.
It equals like, uh, about point seven of a person. So even though we're going to be doing more work, um, we're going to be getting a, a full person, not a point seven. So that'll free up a little bit of his time and add to the, to the work of the school load, so.
Do you think that one person is going to be enough to handle the extra buildings?
So it, it's certainly not going to cut the schools any shorter than it is. It's, I think it
Yeah, that was
In the formula, it adds to the school's time, yeah. Not a lot, but it adds, so it's not, shouldn't take anything away from us. And, and what we gain from it is, is a licensed HVAC person, which we've already seen, um, huge savings from having a licensed light person.
Sure.
I'll give you a great example that's in my head, because we've been talking about stage lights at the high school. So the quote was eighty thousand for, um, the dimmers, because the dimmers are starting to wear out. Um, if we just buy the dimmers and have our guy install it, it cuts it to forty thousand. So I mean, it's, we've, the prevailing wage and charge of labor, we've seen a huge, you know, reduction in a lot of things that we've done.
That's great.
That is good.
Can you, and I don't know if this is superintendent, or can you speak to the, I think my real concern again, comes down to budget, I feel like I'm I know, you know, we're, we're, we're limiting it to seventy-five thousand dollars for the year.
Yes.
Essentially that we would be billing the town for the service that your department would be providing.
Just like the senior center.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, but this is more than sort of custodial
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing any custodial work.
Correct.
It'd just be maintenance.
Um, can you speak to the, I know the town is supposed to be keeping their, or their maintenance dollars in their budgets.
Yeah.
But we would, the new person would be picking up the labor. I guess my, what is the risk of overruns of, we bill the town seventy-five thousand dollars, we actually spent ninety? Because it's the first year and we don't, you know, we don't
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be buying any parts or material whatsoever. So like if we needed floor tiles for town hall, we would go purchase them, we'd get the invoice and give it right to Janet in, uh, Mike's office. She handles the invoices for the maintenance area. Or if we did something at the police station, I would say to the chief, is it okay if we buy X, Y, and Z? And this is what it costs, and he'd say yes or no, and then if he said no, we wouldn't be able to do the job, because we wouldn't have any materials. So all material costs are coming out of each department's budget.
Okay.
And the labor is fixed, because once we post it and hire the person, that's the cost for the
Seller is a seller.
And they, and they do understand that there are employees, so they're subject to contractual obligations. So they understand that it might be seventy-five thousand dollars the first year, but whatever the contracted agreement is for the following year, the assessment will go up. So they understand that.
Yeah, we, we use, our guys have a contract of
Eat any of that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I just want to be aware or sure that, that that doesn't change, just because that's
Yeah, so, and we told them if they wanted extra work done, that they would have to pay the overtime cost.
Right, right.
Okay, and the, um, so, yeah, my concern is just that the schools, not like right now, I think the schools, when I walk into each of them, they look so great. I just don't want to all of a sudden go in and, and see that, you know, they're not looking as, as, um, perfect as they should. Um, I know your, your staff works very hard and I appreciate all that they do, because the schools really have, I think, look the best that they've had ever, so.
I see it as a win where we pick up the HVAC, licensed HVAC guy.
Right.
Because we'll be able to use that guy to, to do work that we pay people to do now.
Yeah, and there is an escape clause, I mean, it, it's going to be evaluated, it's not like, you know, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. We just need to give enough notice, right, that, you know, it's not going to work out, you know.
And this is something that we've been working on for a long time, we talked about this years ago, we, I mean, we have, we had those early morning meetings. Yeah, yeah, so it, I'm actually happy to see that it's actually going to happen. But I think now is the time, I, I, I think before it was
Meaning is everything.
Yeah, there was a lot of unanswered questions and things like that and, um, you know, I think it's, I think it's great.
Well, remember over the years, we've been able to get a better, our, our maintenance staff is awesome. And the numbers have, we have been able to, you know, through creativity, we've been able to increase those numbers. When we first started talking about it, there were not enough resources to even begin to think that it could possibly be done. Remember, when the, when we got our one point two million dollar override, remember the town was talking about putting a hundred and seventy thousand dollar override for a shared maintenance department? Right?
That's right.
We're not doing it for seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, so, you know, I think, I think we're getting a better value, but a lot of it is because we have great people.
Well, I'll be managing who goes where and the work orders, so I mean, the HVAC guy won't just be assigned to the town buildings. He'll, he may be at the high school doing HVAC stuff and I would send a laborer or a regular maintenance guy over here to hang a whiteboard or, or whatever.
Is school due, it's going to be school due?
Yeah, correct.
Is that fully scalable?
Yeah, I already have the town buildings in there as a test, I put them in to test it.
Are there any like extra licensing?
Nope.
I guess, I just want to make sure there's no like
Yeah, we can put
Other costs.
We can put, uh, whatever, yeah, however many people we want on it.
If it was, we would assess that way.
Well, yeah, I just want to make sure we capture that.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions about that? Okay, uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve the establishment of a shared maintenance department with the town beginning July first, twenty eighteen. In accordance with the terms of the memorandum of understanding. Second, further discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with that, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the teachers?
Sure. Yeah, okay, we're just going to quickly do, we have, um, two out of state field trips.
I'm going to owe you a guy.
So we have, um, we have Heidi and then we have, um, Kristen Power.
Yep.
You just come up and talk to us about the field trips you guys are planning.
Sounds like fun.
A lot of fun, yeah.
A lot of fun.
Oh, yeah, we did, um, we were both in first grade last year, so, um, we've done this field trip
Oh, yeah, okay.
Last year, and it's to the seacoast, you have it in front of you.
So much fun.
The seacoast, it's so much fun, it's the best field trip I've ever been on within my years of teaching, because it is so hands-on.
Yep.
Um, it goes along with our habitat unit, um, that we do in the month of, the end of April, all of May. And it's a tide pool for us, because there's two different ones, we do the tide pool. And then you go, you go on the rocky shore, they have a teacher that comes with us. The kids love it, because all it is is, um, hands-on, she explains everything that's out there, they collect it in buckets, we take it back to the museum. When you go in the museum, not only do they have tanks of fish and eels and everything, but everything else about, um, the indoors, it's all hands-on.
Yes.
So it's fabulous.
Sounds awesome.
Um, and the PTA is giving us a thousand dollars, um, for it.
Nice, that's a transportation.
Yes, and it, um, the cost of it comes down to twelve dollars a child, and that doesn't change from last year either.
That's reasonable.
Last year we had that, and if children need help, um, we put that out there as well, so.
And the second grade, um, has decided to attend the Seacoast Science Center as well. We're going to be doing the, um, School of Hard Rocks program. Um, that goes along with our new STEM Scopes program that we have this year. We did a unit on, um, geology and weathering and the rock cycles. So it's another hands-on program that goes along with our science program to bring it to life for the students and help deepen their learning. And again, the PTA is also sponsoring ours and helping with the cost of it.
I love that, that's great. Another example of, of the PTA helping like all, right?
Do you remember, did your children ever go on?
Yeah.
This, yes.
Yep.
Mike.
They did, yeah.
We used to do this, we used to do the sea one in third grade. Um, but maybe, I don't know, but so is, the rock one is new?
Yes, the rock one is, um, the program that they did for the second grade field trip previously has changed a little bit. And where the new STEM Scopes program has come in, we thought this would be a good opportunity to extend the learning and deepen it from last year, since they've been there. And they understand that portion of habitats and the, um, tide pools and the life that lives there. It also goes into the rocks that you would find on the coast of, of New England, so it brings it kind of all back around.
That's nice, sounds like it fits nicely with the curriculum, that's great.
Absolutely.
I'm sure the kids are excited to go. Okay. Um, does anyone else have any questions about it?
These are two separate trips, not one.
Yeah, and, yeah, one's, so when are you going, Heidi?
Um, May twenty-third.
Okay, so the weather should be better for them.
You would think, actually, last year when we went
Nature was very kind to us today.
Last year when we went too, it was a rainy day and it was a little bit cold, and it was in May. And when we went down to the shoreline, we were out there for a good hour. And then when we came in, um, we explored and everything, and even though it was raining, you didn't care. But I'm hoping May twenty-third is a pretty sunny day.
And they do have the ability to change both trips to be indoors if need be. So if there was, um, you know, a really bad storm or thunder and lightning, they do have the ability to bring it all indoors for everybody.
So you don't have to get a rain date?
No, no rain date.
That's good. Okay, uh, do I have to do two separate motions or can I put them all together? Even though they're separate dates, okay. I will make a motion to, um, approve the, um, field trip, the second grade to Seacoast Sci- Science Center. On May, you said twenty-third?
Well, ours is a twenty-third.
Ours is May thirtieth, the second. Okay, I'll do them separate, so May twenty-third as presented by, um, Heidi Vegan. So moved, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'll make a motion to approve the second grade field trip to Seacoast Science Center. Um, on May thirtieth, twenty eighteen, as presented by, uh, Ms. Kristen Power. So moved, second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ladies.
Heidi, were you nervous about a snow day because it would go into your science?
I'm the queen of hope, I said, I already said to Margaret, there's no way, it's going to rain, it's going to rain. I won, I won.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Guy.
Oh, Guy and Ryan.
I think we can call someone else up.
Better have some jokes up here or something, Guy.
Going to have to owe Guy and Ryan.
I'm going to say that I haven't seen this much green since St. Patrick's Day. I was like, wow, this is great, look at all that green.
Better than, it's better than a lot of red.
Yes, and there was very little red, so I was happy to see that, right?
Fortunately, Mike Anderson took most of our time. We'll try to rush through this. And Ryan's
No rushing.
Ryan's feeling a little under the weather, so try to be nice to him.
Thank you.
Speed up on me and I'll give it to him later.
Ryan, you can go. Okay, so why don't you update us with how the winter athletics went?
Okay. So we'll start with, uh, winter chairing, uh, Tracy Wood did a great job with the girls, uh, supporting the basketball teams all winter. Um, it's, it's not a competition squad, the winter, the fall team is. Uh, she has made a proposal to me and Ryan about holding tryouts for the fall chairing in the spring. Which is currently, uh, what most teams do in our league, I think six out of eight, and we're one of the two that do not. Um, and it's recognized by the MSSAA as, um, the, the way that rules and regulations support it. So we support it strongly and we'd like to get your support on it. Can answer any questions about that if you'd like.
So why was it done the way we've done it versus
That was the, that was the way it was always done, because it was a fall sport, so people did it in the fall. But now teams are finding that you, you're way behind as far as music and choreography and
Oh, okay, sure.
They, you, most teams get their music in the, in the summer and they start to, you know, do the choreography and then teach the girls. We do it from day one in the fall, so we're, we're currently behind, you know? There are some, um, there are some reasons, um, that, that, well, there are some things that we would, uh, ensure that there'd be some open spots available for fall, um, athletes, you know? So it's not like you, we're going to pick fifteen kids in the, in the spring and that's it.
So someone moved in in the summer.
Yes, so there'll be, there'll be alternate spots and there'll be, there'll be extra spots. So like an alternate spot, some may be named an alternate in the spring and then have the entire summer to work on their routine or work on tumbling or, or whatever. You know, to get better and, and, uh, try out again. That's just for the competition team, because it's, you know, we have two, technically two teams in the, uh, fall. So I think it's a great idea, we've been talking about it for a few years, we did some research. Most of the teams that we compete against, and especially the teams of the K-Pan League, all are currently doing this, so I, I think we should try to catch up.
Right.
Is there more coaching?
No, not in the offseason, no, no, it's, it's exactly the same.
Another budgetary question.
I didn't say budget.
Always so mindful. I don't know if I'd want to be married to you. But it's, it's funny, because chairing has come a long way. I recall way back when I was in high school, chairing didn't have choreography and they didn't have music.
It wasn't a sport.
It was just, no, it was just you had chairs. So, yeah, it is, it's just clapping.
And especially, in Georgetown, it's come, it's come a long way.
It has, well, and I attribute that to Tracy.
Yeah, she's done a great job.
Tracy really has done a great job.
So, I mean, you guys are the athletics experts in terms of, of how to
Yep, we recommend it.
So if you recommend it, then I feel
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, the, uh, ski team, uh, Tim Lassen did a, did a great job. Uh, we are a three-team co-op.
Yeah, and who's that with?
Uh, Triton and Newburyport.
Okay.
And the majority of, of the athletes are coming out of Newburyport.
How many do we have?
Oh, four.
Four.
And how many total were on the team?
Total was twenty-three.
Wow, that's good. And that team, that's definitely grown, because remember when that first started as a co-op, you know, they didn't have that, that kind of interest.
Yep, we're, we're in a great league, uh, it's very competitive, it's, it's, it's a lot of Division One schools that, that we compete against. And, um, it has grown a lot. Our co-op is, is up this year, so we're going to, we're going to apply for, uh, another two-year co-op with the same teams.
Are we the host?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it's worked out really well so far. Uh, Mr. Lassen will not be coaching moving forward, um, he has resigned his position, so we'll be, um, we'll be taking the lead, looking for the coach, uh, shortly.
What's the user fee for that?
It's, uh, I think it's the, either the lowest or the middle.
Oh, okay.
It's the middle.
It's the middle, so four twenty-five?
I believe so.
Okay, and that's Bradford?
Yeah.
Nice.
Why would, and this is a co-op question, which I've never been able to wrap my head around, if we're four of twenty-three, why are we the host? Why wouldn't a Newburyport be the host in this case, if they had the
That's a good question. We, um, in this particular league, it's my opinion, if we switch from us not being the host, I think it would create a different co-op. And we'd have to present it as such to the league, and I, I'm not sure they would support it. I think they would take, it's a takeover of Newburyport, you know, entering in, um, seeing that we're, 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 all we're really asking for is, is a re-up of our current co-op. So our, our kids
It's just a renewal.
Right, our kids ski too, um, and, and the other, the other teams do as well. We do have a great relationship with the athletic directors and, and the, and the people in that, in their communities too, so it's not a big deal. We had the coach too, so we have the, we, we would hire the coach.
Does it depend on who decides, so like, did we say, hey, we're interested in a, a ski program? And then we went and found two other programs that were interested in coming in?
Yes.
Is that, is that how you, that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
How does one become the
We made the first We made the first.
It's not a numbers thing. Because with our, like, for example, look at our wrestling co-op, right? When we first started with wrestling, it was mostly Ipswich kids, wasn't it?
It was, yep.
Yep, but we are the home team. We're the home, we own the co-op.
Because like.
There've been times when it reversed, right?
Yeah, and now it's reversed this year, so we're primarily Georgetown wrestling.
Yeah.
And there's a, just a couple of Ipswich kids. Four years ago, it was half and half. I think for continuity and those legal issues with the league, I think it's best for us to continue doing it, you know? And we work with the league itself as, as athletic directors, so, um, we have a pretty good relationship.
As long as we can maintain that, because I remember with track, um, I believe it was Ipswich had enough people to sort of push us out, so.
And that was done by the state. That was the MIAA that made that determination. I was the athletic director at that time and we had, we went out to the MIAA offices and petitioned their decision. They decided to break up the co-op and we went and brought all this evidence of how great the co-op has worked for us. I don't think we've won anything, you know, so it wasn't like, you know, winning, you know, national championships together. So it was just great that our kids and their kids, we had, you know, I think it was like ten, fifteen years together and it was, it was working great. They made the decision based on, they have a new number system that the MIA has produced and it's kind of their co-op, um, uh, determinator and, and they have it by sport now, so they, they look at the numbers and say, well, you have too many numbers, you can't be in a co-op. And then I would count that, well, I don't have enough numbers to have a sport. And, and they made that decision.
I know, and you'd think they would support the athletes that wanna be athletes to provide them with a sport.
So they cycle too with, with how they do things over the years, so, so they were very strong in that era with breaking up co-ops.
Okay.
And then now they've, they've kinda come back around the last few years where they're encouraging more co-ops. Now they're still, uh, uh, finalizing different numbers, uh, different districts and leagues have had input to what the numbers should look like. And, you know, that now it's a case-by-case basis, so you have to really present your case and, and you have to, it's a, it's a, you know, big process that we have to write up and, 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 and present our case of why it's beneficial for both teams, why it's not gonna be, you know, not creating a powerhouse to, you know, to win championships. And, and then you have to go through all the financials and, and responsibilities. So, you know, it just keeps evolving that process.
And some co-ops, you know, there aren't really, there isn't really a need for a limit of kids. Like, you know, for example, in basketball, you know, you only carry so much of a roster, right? So it's, you know, you have to be mindful of that, but skiing.
Right, but it was the same as track, you know, I just knew that we were kind of ousted and we had to find another.
We're with Essex Tech.
So I just wanted to see that this wasn't gonna happen here.
That's great, I'm happy to, I'm happy to hear that.
Okay.
So, uh, boys' basketball, uh, as you know, we had a new coach, Josh Kelty, did a great job for us. They finished six and fourteen. We were in a, a, a lot of those games. We were, in my opinion, very competitive.
On the other way easily.
By one point.
Yeah. And, uh, we, we, um, certainly, uh, expect the program to continue in that direction. It's hard to come in and just flip the, the, the numbers, but he's doing a good job. The All-Star was Hunter Lane this year, we're proud of him.
Yeah.
Girls' basketball, uh, they finished with a three and seventeen record. I could say the very similar things. Coach Glenn, uh, did a good job coming in this year for us. We were in a lot of the girls' basketball games and they were very competitive. And, uh, Emma Dunn Levy was our KPN League All-Star representative. Wrestling did, uh, another spectacular season, seventeen and six as a team, and that's amazing. I'm a former head wrestling coach and to have seventeen team wins is incredible. It's so hard to do because it's fourteen weight classes and, you know, you have to have people, you know, on weight and being competitive throughout the season. Those kids work incredibly hard, as some of you guys do know.
Right, Ryan does a great job.
Yep.
Too, and Ian and Troy Fojatano, I'm so proud of them.
Yeah, that was, that was great. Uh, both winning, uh, the sectionals as brothers and they, and they go back-to-back. So it's pretty, it's pretty powerful. Let's see the, the, the G go out there twice.
The Blythe boys have been steady all the way.
Incredible career.
Yeah, they've had incredible career.
Uh, some of the, uh, highlights, uh, John Blythe with a hundred and six career wins. He will be updated to our banner this, uh, this offseason. And Ian Fojatano, uh, believe it or not, already has a hundred wins. So when his number is done, he'll, he'll be up there, we hope, uh, a lot, a lot of other team players. Yes.
He's a junior. And Troy is a sophomore.
They're really fun to watch too.
Yes. We had a record amount of players qualify for the Division Three State Tournament with seven, so that's, you know, great job again there. Girls' hockey, we co-op with Masco and some of you have followed them steadily. But the Iron Girls, Kate and Erin, uh, they were awesome this year. And especially in the playoffs, they really stepped it up and, and played great.
They scored the first goal, they, in the last playoff game, they.
Erin had both those goals.
One had the goal and one had the assist.
Yep.
Erin had the goal and I think Kate had the assist.
So very proud of them. That was a great run, uh, came just, just one game short.
Who did we lose against? Do we know?
Shrewsbury, I believe.
No, 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 it wasn't. It was a team they played throughout the year. It was Tuxbury.
Methuen, Tuxbury.
Yeah. Okay, that was a co-op. Wow.
Most, most, most of those hockey teams I learned this year are co-ops.
Yeah, it's tough to, it's tough to have enough.
Almost all of the teams in the league are co-ops.
And that goalie was amazing.
Yeah, the Masco.
She was just so awesome to watch.
Boys' hockey, they made the tournament this year as well. Uh, we're co-op with Penn Tucket. Cam Martin had a huge goal in the first round of the playoffs, like with the second left to, to, um, to, to get that win in the playoffs. And, and that was great for, for us to get a lot of that press. So they did great. Um, I have the participation numbers. We, I don't need to read through those. You guys have that. I'll answer questions if you'd like, but.
Have we figured out the costs on the hockey?
No, we haven't figured that out.
Yeah, we still have to talk about that.
Have to talk about that. Yeah, the irons have been very patient. I did tell them we're.
We're, uh, requesting a meeting.
Yeah, follow-up.
Yep.
With us?
With us.
With budget?
Yeah.
Just a quick spring preview. I know there's still snow everywhere out there, uh, but, uh, the, uh, the field is actually plowed off the last few days. Mike and his crew, um, did a great job of taking it down to a, a certain level. And then, uh, the radiation from the, the field and the pellets now is starting to take over. So it's completely, coming out of school today, it was completely cleared where they plowed, you know, the outside's still covered.
I have to say, I do get nervous when I see that. I went to the school today and I saw them snow blowing it and I'm like, oh my god, am I gonna start to see like?
I thought this was anything that the grass.
It's a protective god that, that doesn't allow it near it.
They have the right attachment on the machine. Cause I said the same thing, I'm like, you're not putting that snow blower on there, right?
Like an inch above.
Yeah.
The turf.
We query the league, we query the league and most teams are doing it. Most schools are now doing it.
They volunteered and.
Shovel.
They'll shovel, yeah.
It's a good thing. Quickly, in the spring, we, we did hire two, uh, lacrosse coaches first. The girls' coach, Morgan Deshaun, we welcome her. She's our, they're off and running obviously, um, in, in their tryouts. She was a standout at Endicott College and, uh, currently works in the Linfield Athletic Department. And she, uh, was a JV girls' coach at Lexington for a few years. Uh, she also coached at Endicott prior to that, so, um, she, she's been excellent. You know, we're very happy, uh, to have her on board. And on the boys' side, Paul Muscovitz, uh, he lives in Raleigh. He went to Peabody High School, played there, went to Bridgeston Academy and then Siena College in New York. And, um, they're Division One in lacrosse, he played there and then he finished his career at Salem State. And, um, we were, we're very happy to have him. I think the last time we talked, we, we had another candidate and it fell through late in the process and we were really worried. But, uh, we kept, um, you know, with the help of the public and, uh, people passing the word, we got, we got a really good candidate and we're off to a good start.
They're both some very qualified. So the numbers for the boys, I know last year was like teetering whether we were gonna have it or not, so this year they're strong?
They're, I think it was twenty-two as of today.
Yeah, they lost one, so.
Okay, so that's good, right? Because how many are on a field that?
We play, you play, um, ten.
Okay, lacrosse is a sport I know nothing about.
Ten start and then, and then you have to have alternates, cause the, the midfielders run both, you know, up and down and they have to sub out. You need a sub on defense and you need a sub on attack and then you need a backup goalie.
It's comparable to soccer, I guess.
Okay, so twenty-one is, twenty-one is good, because soccer would be good too, those numbers.
Yeah, we're hoping maybe some more kids come out and we're obviously hoping no one gets injured.
I think, well, last year.
We have a trainer now though.
Yeah.
It was slow.
Twelve or something. It was a scary number last year.
But the, um, the trainer is, is doing great.
Yeah, yeah, trainer's working out really well for us and, and we're, we're very happy to have him. He's done a lot of work on a lot of kids and, uh, he's helping with all the concussion testing and, and tracking that stuff. And, and that takes, that takes a lot of pressure off of us, you know, cause we were doing that earlier in the year. And, um, we can attest that it's, you know, it's time-consuming and it's, but it's very important that you have the medical people making those types of decisions, obviously. So we deferred him. He's on all spring, so same as, you've probably seen him in the fall and the winter.
And is that, that's gonna be an ongoing relationship?
We, we hope so. I'm not sure about his long-term plans, cause he's a young guy and, and, and we're not sure how long he's, you know, gonna be able to do this as a.
Short-term.
Yeah, he, he does other work too and he may move on. But that's, the, the goal is for us obviously to stay in this type of situation because it's stable. And, you know, guarantees us, um, somebody that's in the professional field that can, that can also work with the kids. So over time, that relates, we'd love to keep them forever, but over time, that relationship gets better and the care and, and, uh, communication get better with the parents and the hospitals and the nurses and myself and, you know, so we're cultivating it, you know, but we, we'll see how that works out. So that's, uh, that's my preview, uh, that's my preview and the winter, um, situation.
Right, thank you.
Is that all the time we have?
Nope. We have all the time.
We, oh.
Give another hour.
Take up everybody's time.
We started early, just the.
Right, we did. Talk about the action plan.
Okay, now, I don't know how you wanna do this, um, do you, do you want me to just go through like?
Do you wanna ask questions?
I don't think you have to go through it all.
Yeah, right.
I made some notes myself, I made very little, but I don't think we have to.
So why don't we do that when we ask questions?
Yeah, I think that would be.
I think I also put, you know, a little backup package.
I, I put as much as I could to back up.
A little backup package. I was reading that tonight. I'm like, when is this ending? It was, thank you for that.
That's why you're going last.
That's, that's, that.
Well, how we.
It might answer a lot of, it might answer a lot of questions before we even get here, you know, it might, it might answer. If not, I can, me and Ryan can try to help out.
Are you gonna be doing the handbook again? Cause there's some issues that need to be rectified.
The, the athletic handbook?
Didn't we do it in the beginning of the school year?
The athletic handbook is, uh, we, we're gonna update it this spring, yes, for next year.
So you'll need people?
Yes, we're gonna need people. We're gonna have a, a subcommittee for the athletic handbook.
Okay.
Okay.
We're updating, we're also updating the coaches handbook and the athletic.
Coaches and, coaches will be out separate from.
Should have one for the parents too.
Some of these changes that you have in this packet are going in the handbook.
Yes.
Some of these.
Yeah, so what, what happened, I guess, the last couple of years, we weren't around or involved, uh, in it.
Really?
Every, every, I think the handbooks kinda all got put into one handbook, it seemed, like.
Yeah, they all got into like middle high school handbook.
Yeah, they all became the middle high school handbook or the athletic section in that handbook.
Yeah.
And that's, that, that doesn't make sense to, to us or me.
Should be separate, yeah.
It has to be separate, cause when, when I, um, when we hire a coach, we have, we like to have a coaches handbook, which has a lot of that same, you know, rules and regulations, but it also has more specific things that coaches need to know. You know, pre-game, post-game, you know, uh, we give them a full list of emergency, uh, stuff and numbers, like who to, who to call. You gotta call certain numbers after each game. So we give them this separate type packet now. It used to all be one, so we're, we're, we're gonna pull some of the pertinent stuff out and, and recreate that coaches handbook, uh, this spring. And then we're gonna obviously update the, the full athletic handbook, which, which is for the students and the, um, parents. And then we will put a sec, an athletic section still in the, the student, high school handbook. You know, so we just gotta decide which pieces should go where. And then we'll, then we would just continually try to update those, you know, yearly. So some of that is in there a little bit.
There should be minimal updates, like, well, whatever you guys, it sounds like you have some suggestions, but then it shouldn't be too difficult each year, right, to go through it. It should just be minimal changes and.
Minimal, plus, uh, there, there are always, um, unfunded state mandates in athletics that they, that they like. They say this is what you have to do and we have to do it. Goes in concussion protocol being, being one. There's an opioid.
Oh, right, is that still?
Oh, yeah.
So you have to, they have to sign off or, or the coaches have to talk about it?
Yeah, and, and it's part of our registration where parents have to leave their college and.
You have to read it and sign off that you read it, went to the website and, and are aware of it. Yeah, so, and there's more, I, there's more things like that that they're gonna continue to come down.
The AED is probably something that's coming, that's gonna be mandatory.
Yeah, I warned them, I think, one of the last meetings.
I'm surprised that isn't mandatory now, surprising, you know?
Well, you have to have an AED in the schools, obviously.
Right, right, right.
But we, we have a portable AED that goes out to the fields every day. They're talking about an AED designated to each field that you have. Each playing surface has to have its own designated AED. And that's, that's crazy, cause, you know, you're talking probably twelve or so for us, we'd have to have twelve and I know they're like two, three thousand dollars a piece. And then where do you store them? I mean, you talk the upper fields on the, uh, we'd have to build something that, that it goes in that no kid can't go break into, you know? And then have it accessible somehow, you know?
Locked, but not logged.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're, uh, we're, I think we're still a year away, to be honest. I think it's a year away where they're gonna try to, right, it might not make it, but.
Because they'll probably get a lot of pushback.
Well, they are through, I know, I've been to the district, um, athletic directors meetings and, and they're getting a lot of pushback saying stuff I'm talking about. People, bigger districts are, you know, quoting like sixty-five thousand dollars for AEDs, you know, like, we're out of business. You know, like, if that, if you make that law, we don't play sports. So, we'll keep you posted.
Okay. Okay. So just one of the questions that I had, it's on the second page under, uh, goal three, effectively supervise and evaluate athletic personnel. So it says, all coaches are observed a minimum of three times and formally evaluated once a year. Again, I recognize that you're both athletic professionals, expert, your expertise is more than mine in this, so I recognize that. But I'm just saying, is three inadequate number, you think, to go out and, and?
Yeah.
And observe a coach and be able to, uh, give a solid evaluation at the end?
Well, I think they're, they're constantly being evaluated regardless if it's formal or informally.
Okay, so just anytime you're there, you're saying?
So even just having a normal conversation with them, like communication-wise, how are they responding to emails and back to us? Or just how they interact with the school personnel in general. So everything, we take everything into consideration when evaluating.
But you guys have been to more practices.
Yeah, so practices and games.
That was a concern, remember? We, we were thinking that they really could go to only certain games, but we, we did hear that from the public.
Between the two of us, we've, we've covered a, a lot of ground, um, practices and games. And we do preseason meetings with our coaches, postseason meetings, postseason full evaluations. So three is just a minimum, it's, it's like a minimum number.
Now, that word formal is pretty much right, so three formal, but that doesn't necessarily, I was thinking in my head that it was gonna be.
Well, I could tell you, we've, some of the, some of the evaluation, some of the coaches have, have been evaluated, you know?
More than three times.
Dozens of times, if not, if not close to a hundred times. I mean, it's a daily, it's a daily thing that we would communicate and, um, like you said, via email, telephone, anything.
Yep, and I think the thing that is also important is that we really thought it was important to make the evaluation more substantial as opposed to like a checklist, right?
Like it should be a rubric.
I think it did though, looking at that Georgetown coaches.
Yeah, so, so that's exactly right. I, I don't like that old one, it's, it's the one we're currently using, cause it's negotiated with the union years ago, I believe. So, yeah, I think, I thought it was, I thought it was, maybe it's not anymore.
Well, we, we never had that conversation with them, but I, I, I'm sure that the one you've proposed here would be acceptable.
That's, that's running almost like, that's running almost identic, identical to the mass state teachers. That, that's how the rubric is set up, so, so as an administrator, we, we use a rubric very similar. It gives us more, um, it broadens our scope of what we're looking for in the feedback, you know? The other one, the, that feedback, some of it is, is very narrow and, you know, very specific.
It wasn't effective.
You know, I don't think it was effective. It, it's more, it was more for, all right, at the end of the year to, to go through the official evaluation and we've, we're finding we would have to write in all kinds of things that, that kinda fell around one of those big.
It was a check the box.
Right, so we would like to propose that rubric as our official, um, coaches assessment.
Yeah, I think the standards, standards one through five, I thought addressed everything. And I like that you have, like, if, you know, what the needs improvement would, you know, how you came to that conclusion.
It goes specifically in, so there's no, there's no gray area.
Exactly, it's not like needs improvement, okay, well, where do I need improvement? Here it tells you, you know, specifically in the different standards.
Understand and draw a conclusion a lot easier too.
And do you sit with them with the feedback from the surveys, you know, between parents and students to show them sort of where they're at or?
Exactly, um, we, we use the old form. Exactly, um we 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 use the old form and we bring the all the parent feedback. And we read them all, go through every single one. And and then we go through, uh we've been doing it together this year, so we go through a um. The formal evaluation, step by step. Communicating with the coach and getting their feedback too and and making decisions on those boxes where they stand, then there's an overall assessment, and then we make a decision. Whether we're gonna offer another contract or not, or we're gonna offer a contact with a contract with conditions. You know, or or higher expectations for next year, or or higher goals, you know, could be wins, losses, or. Something um on those lines. Increase the goals for the for the team, for the coach, whatever the situation that we seem is.
Okay, so now that you said that, I'll I'll, I have a question on that, so you said possibly, you know, wins and losses. Would that be? How important is it to have the wins and losses look better versus you seeing, you know, the the freshmen and the varsity? Athletes. You know, themselves improving. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's a great question, because it's a, you're talking about a program evaluation.
Exactly, like, you know, yeah, they might not have the most wins, but you've seen a substantial improvement.
I don't think it's indicative to what what their program's building up to, so just because of.
Right.
The varsity team isn't necessarily.
I think the boys basketball coach is an example of that, right?
Yeah.
So this year, you know, it was his first year, but the feedback was very positive from all constituency groups, right? But he didn't have a winning season, if that's the tipping point, right?
Right.
He won, he won a good number of games and the team was in it, but it was more important, I think, for him to basically be coaching the team, motivating the kids.
I think the kids ended up developing.
They did.
They played, they played differently.
They were much better over the course of the year, I agree.
And it's through the whole program at least, like from varsity all the way down to middle school, it seemed like.
Yes, it was stronger.
Right.
There's a balance, there definitely is a balance there, and I think as time goes on, there has to be some growth. Because you can't keep saying that um while everybody's doing great and, you know, the lower levels are are working to, you know. Some level, we'd like to become competitive. Uh our goal is always to make every tournament that we, every sport enters is our goal. And obviously do better and 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 win the tournaments, but uh if we if we don't have some goal, then. I don't know what we're doing really, especially on the va- it's the varsity that we talked about.
Right.
So as time goes on, if if the numbers are low, 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 low. I mean, we may have to make a a decision that maybe what is currently going on is not working long term, like.
Doesn't meet modern needs.
Yeah, we might have to look at that. But it's very difficult in a one-year snapshot. To to make that determination, you know, unless there was like some egregious things that that took place.
You have to give more than just the one year, right, yeah. No, I I I like this assessment, I think it's um, it's a nice job. Did you uh get this from? Is this mirrored from like another district or?
It's um it's taken from multiple sources, we wrote a lot of it that that fit the what we do here better.
Yeah, because it seems like it's.
Yeah, there's this stuff that's.
Directed to things like in a small district like ours would.
Right. And that's where we 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 started, I mean, no, I started, it was a bigger district, and then we started narrowing it down, and then we put words in that we use and that we like better. And some of those um, did I call them standards or?
Standard.
So the standards um. Some of those were just directly from us and we just copied the how they how they progressed or went, you know, the four stages, so.
It's always good to get a template and then work off that to.
You don't have to reinvent the wheel.
No, no. Uh what about the coordination of the seven to twelve program, like say for instance, like Josh? In terms of basketball, how did that go, like, he uh formed a good relationship with like the middle? School coach and, you know, got to know those younger athletes and.
I will sa- I will say, yeah, he he had some some access to those guys, I would say this. As a first-year coach, it's very difficult to to go across the spectrum on all your levels. And get down to the youth, you know, the GAA level, he he was down at the GAA level a lot. And uh they, I I talked to a lot of the basketball people down there and they they would tell me. He came down and helped with practices, he did some, you know, impromptu clinics, he worked with the kids, we had the GAA night for, you know, with the the kids come up, so. So that that was that was all positive. I would say there's there's always gonna be a need for growth. You know, as the head coach of a program.
Right.
Uh to get to your, to get to your levels, and it's very difficult. Being a new person in the in the district and and making all those connections and having you really put your stamp on everything, but. Our expectations are gonna are that that's what we want and that's what we're gonna demand as we move forward, so that's that's what I was saying earlier, you know, we we look at it, we. Look at the whole evaluation and then there could be some stipulations in that area that we 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 weren't happy with, that. We understand you may not have time or have figured it all out, but. Now you better start thinking about it and start figuring out, because that's something that may. Become a big hurdle as we go forward and maybe something that's an, you know, that draws our attention, we say, we don't want this. So that might be another reason.
Right, and it wouldn't be a surprise to him, because that was a big part of the um.
As you well know.
Process, when we talked to them, we wanted to make sure that they were going to be working with the younger.
And it gets very difficult from there, because they get, you know, a little pigeonhole on the on the varsity and all the expectations and pressures of 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 making sure that's that, and then you have to realize it starts. You know, your your time has to, you have to look a little more globally as the head coach, it's tough.
Right.
It's tough.
Well, I have to admit, I did go to the games mostly because I was told to watch him.
Yeah, he's very passionate.
Yeah, he's very passionate, like his tie would come off.
Spirit days, the students dressed as him.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, it was great.
We're happy that he kept all of his clothes on. On, they weren't always tucked in, but we're working on that and and um.
Started wearing a jacket during games.
He still ate his tie, but, you know, at least his shirt was tucked in.
I think it's great that we have uh.
He's a local guy.
An adult, you know, that went through the ranks of Georgetown, he was a student of Sherrill's.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
So I I think it's great that that they wanna come back, you know, even Ryan, that you wanna come back here, because I think it says a lot that you wanna see.
Never said that, oh, wow.
He doesn't quit, guy, so that's.
Alright, I guess, yeah, he does wanna come back.
He did say he wanted to talk to Guy after the meeting. So. The other, so the question that I had, it's one in yellow and it's under standard uh goal four. So coordinate, it's the bottom one, coordinate parent groups to support athletics, so this isn't um a question that's.
Tough one.
You're not surprised at, I'm sure, but how are we gonna do that, are we looking at like a large organization, like one large organization that works with all of the different sports? Or are we still trying to do, like, you know, Georgetown football has such a great parent group there and? How, what are we really looking for?
It's it's difficult right now um with the with the um collapse of um.
Boosters.
The boosters.
Yeah, I know.
So, and the boosters, so everybody knows, the boosters imploded on themselves, so it wasn't anything that was forced upon them.
So just people dropped out as their kids.
As their kids graduate, they're they're out and the and the other people that were coming up. Had different ideas about fundraising and different ideas about what was important to them and and.
Well, it's usually their own child sport, right?
Right.
But I think we need to have like a, like.
We gotta do it, we gotta figure it out.
Parents of athletes, you know, and not be so. Set on, well, I only want fundraising for this sport, because that's a sport my child plays, but we have to do something, because the boosters used to fund like the um letters, right?
Jackets.
Jackets, letters.
Transportation buses.
Things like that, that we really need that financial.
Financially, towards the end, it was, the boosters were hurting.
Yeah, it was one gentleman that I give him kudos for lasting as long as he did.
Right.
That was great, but but so what do you, what are you thinking or?
I mean, I I could, we we have been bouncing this around, we've talked to Cal multiple times uh about this. Uh I'm open for any suggestions on it, to be honest with you.
Couple of people who really like wanna take this on, that, I mean, that's that's some champions for it.
I know they talked about like getting um volunteers from each sport, like two volunteers, like from girls' basketball, two from soccer. And then all working together and forming that committee, I don't know.
That didn't work um when Mr. DeFranco was was doing that, and then my, two years ago um. We sent out the thing to everybody too and had the had the coaches at that um start of the season meeting, the parent meeting. To tell them, we need one volunteer to sit on this board, and we we got like nothing. I don't think I had anybody.
I think that, I think it's like.
Maybe it wasn't, maybe it wasn't uh worded right, or maybe it wasn't presented the right way, but.
I think people have to, you know, people have to have a a reason, right? So if everybody starts to realize that.
I could give them a reason.
That the athletic program is not, you know, we we're trying not to.
Is the uniforms is the number one um probably criticism that we get.
Yeah.
And frustration that we get, because.
Oh, well, because we have to tape, we have to put tape over like a one, because there's two number twelves out there.
And only that, how about, how about the numbers falling off?
That that was a little.
Yeah, they look a little bit.
Oh, I know.
They do, and it's not your fault, I get it.
It's embarrassing and um. We're we're working, we're working on solutions, but right now the solutions are that that the budget is not is not supporting the uniforms, and that's not not a knock on anybody, but. What we used to do with the boosters is we'd go to them and ask for support for what, you know, we'd figure out what sport really needs to. Get the uh set of uniforms.
Right.
They could never like fund one set of uniforms, a set of uniforms in any sport is pro- like four, five thousand dollars, you know, depending, it's almost across the board.
Cause you buy home and away, right?
Yeah, and um and they uh they would never have that type of money, so they might say, well, we'll give you a thousand dollars towards that, and I'd have the coach come in and we'd meet. And then then we'd have to do the fundraising individually as well and have the the current sport parents would would step up and that that would take us years, like so two, three years. We'd store, keep storing money and then go purchase the uniforms, that's kinda how it's going right now without the that support. But if there was like a um a a booster's situation where we could get everybody involved and and do a bigger fundraiser and then have that money just for uniforms. Don't ask for anything else, we're just.
PTA and GEF, right, so there's a group of excited people.
Can't you do, can't Guy fill out a um? A um grant at the ga- for the GEF Gala?
Sure, but that, he'd probably get five thousand dollars, right, I mean, that's the maximum gift they give.
Take it.
But but I'm, but I'm thinking, you know, like, if you think about it, the PTA at one point was gonna fold, right? And then a couple of interested people said, look, it, we'll we'll get in here and we'll do it, and you know, so they, you know, they do nice things for us every year, I mean, they'll. They'll raise, they'll have anywhere between, you know, twenty and forty thousand dollars, right? And GEF, same thing, they run an event, right, and they, you know, they make enough money, but it's a, it's again, it's a group of people, you know, we need, what we need is a. Group of people for athletics that are willing to, you know.
Maybe if you think outside of the box and go to corporations to see if they'll sponsor.
Oh, yeah, well, we, you know, that's what we're trying to do with our signs.
Not just in Georgetown.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, not just in Georgetown.
Not just in Georgetown, we've already tapped everybody in Georgetown.
Did we, I, did we do that when we, when we approached, right, when we went out and approached, was it just Georgetown businesses?
We just did Georgetown businesses, but we're revisiting, sending it a mass out.
For the signs?
For the signs, because we haven't been able to, we're not gonna put them up during the. Winter anyway, because they're gonna get destroyed.
So maybe if you put something on the morning announcements that says, you know, you know, if you know anybody, if you work for a business or a corporation that has matching funds, if you know anybody. Who owns a business in, you know.
That's kinda what like the corporate sponsorships with the scoreboards, I guess.
Yeah, that's what it is. But if people knew that this is what we needed and they could say, oh, I have a company and they might match, you know, I thought you just wanted Georgetown businesses, maybe that. That would be another idea to get the word out.
Because, you know, I'm gonna tell you, just as a parent, people, you know, parents are gonna say. As they see the 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 basketball team, like without the, you know, this, the matching uniform, they're thinking to themselves. I paid four seventy-five, you know what I mean, that that's the, and and I get how they're thinking.
Yeah.
You know. But reality is that four seventy-five, you know, is helping all the sports, I mean, it's not just for that, so um. But that is how parents are thinking, like, why aren't, why don't they have uniforms, I paid four seventy-five, I should, so.
I understand.
It, we have to start doing something, it's just.
I think that, I think that should be a rallying um point, is the uniforms, because that's that's kinda, that's that's a nice, it's it's the eye test.
When you wanna come out, right, looking like a.
Yeah, but some teams do.
Oh, I know.
Some teams do, some teams don't, so that's the thing, it's the it's the he's and have nots and. And we need to like, we do take care of some other sports through the budget though.
Thinking of other corporations outside of Georgetown, you can certainly target, you know.
But to get a group of people who'd be interested and sort of say, alright, what, let's look at the options we might have for a fundraiser where we can make a significant amount of money.
Well, or just even the folks involved with GAA, I know there's not a lot of fundraising that goes on with GAA. But there's a lot of people involved.
Right.
And as their kids get older.
Yeah.
You know, there's more of an investment.
Yeah.
Well, they used to do like the baseball night, right, they used to have a baseball comedy.
Yeah, that was fun.
Yeah, yeah, and that's coming up, I think.
It is, it's.
Oh, it is?
I think it's next week.
Oh, next week?
I'm not sure of the exact date, although.
But but even like um, you know, capitalizing on like, I I'm, I always thought that we could have done like the the road race.
Yeah, I know.
Cause you know, people that run, they do, they wanna, they'll run anything.
Right.
You know, but that.
There is a road race coming up in town.
So I'm thinking that would be nice if we could have gotten that.
And then, and then Ari, I think, is doing one too, right?
I could tell, I could tell you from past experience, um there's a lot of men I was involved in organizing a road race and if it.
So I was kinda, I was kinda part of the, I was involved in the Ari one kinda, and they had twenty participants.
Oh, really?
So it wasn't, they were, they kinda comboed, they, yeah, so they kinda comboed it with the breakfast, so they did the breakfast with a a road race. So they own, they had more people showed up for the breakfast rather than the race itself.
But I wonder how the other one that's coming up, the Loris run.
Yeah.
I I don't know how um.
Well, okay, so let's, maybe when we're thinking about goals for next year, let's let's really put some, let's see if we can recruit. There's gotta be some people who are will are willing to step up, there's gotta be. So we did a lot this year, Guy and Ryan, I mean, you guys really did a great job with all of the things that you've gotten accomplished, maybe that ends up being one of those things that. Rises to the, you know, cause these other things are in place now, right, so what are the things that are sort of left that we need to put our energy into?
Yeah, I know, I'll have to try and start thinking outside of the box too.
Well, I can give you an update on the summer camps, so that's where I, that's where I was prior, so I came here.
What was the signups?
Zero people. Yeah, so nobody ended up showing up. Last, so it was supposed to be two weeks ago, snow canceled.
Well, yeah, that's.
Last week, Wednesday, snow day again, canceled, so I rescheduled because of parent teacher night, I'm figuring out people will be out. Already, might as well try to kill two birds.
And nobody.
No, so I had, and I had teacher, I had parents email me specifically, so the word, I think the word got out, maybe I could have done, obviously, I could have done a better job. Was zero, but parents did email me and knew about it.
Yeah, I I already advertised, we guys.
We'll just, we'll.
So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna try one more push, maybe early April and see where things go.
It's on the website, that's, so how else can we advertise it?
Can people sign up online?
They, we don't have an option to sign up online, because I feel uh when we met earlier, it would be better to have the face-to-face, at least for the first time, for parents to understand where they're. Sending their kid.
But that might be, that might not, let's think about that, because that might not be something we shouldn't consider, because I find that in this world of signup genius and all those kinda things that. People are signing up for things online.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, March is the month that, you know, a lot of families look at signing up for for summer cases.
March is the month.
Yeah, if you could get them signed up online, then you could, you know, meet in April or something after they've signed up to distribute information, to get more. I don't know, something.
I kinda wanted to make everything in the same, get everything in the same area, so it's easier to organize.
Right.
That was kinda my.
Let's think about it, though, for signups.
Yes.
It's just this, that's why, I think that's what Pam's getting at, so, yeah, you wanna get everybody together if you need to meet with them, but. Signing up, you know, saying they're interested and they're committing to it, maybe that, like, we do that with our enrichment programs now, it's online, and people can actually pay online.
Yeah.
And people like are waiting at their computer until it opens to get the enrichment.
Yeah, let's talk about it, right, we'll talk about it.
And what were the, was the grade level, so kids going?
It was eight, eight to thirteen.
We'll just follow up on that, because you know, maybe we can get together a specific post and a link and things for the Georgetown, um for the public schools Facebook page.
Yeah, so I tried all, I tried the Facebook, I tried the.
I know, well, we're, we're gonna get it out there.
Yeah.
Once a few people.
Don't get discouraged.
I'm not.
Don't get discouraged.
Pick yourself up and get back in the game.
Stay positive. You've done a great job.
Doing a great job, great job.
How do we, how are we doing on signs, because you brought it up?
So I think we're at eight and those were Georgetown signs.
Okay.
There were six. Six, six to eight.
I think when people start seeing them, they're gonna.
That's the thing, once the word gets out.
American Legion looks great with, like, I am, it really looks nice. So I think once people, except, but I know what you're saying, you don't wanna put them, well, we're not gonna put them up in the winter, but do you have a date, like, did they sign up, like, okay, they're expecting this?
No.
So were you waiting for like-
So we were waiting, we sent them out and then we got money back during the late fall into the winter, so now we're waiting to order and then, cause if we get more coming in, we're gonna, we're gonna try to order in bulk.
Yeah, I, I think people will start-
And that's, that is an annual fee.
It'll be an annual fee, yeah.
Is it more for the, for the first year to make the sign and then less in future?
Then it'll be, um, so I forgot exactly how we ended up wording it, but it should be for the sign, it should be more expensive and the annual rate should be-
Less.
Less, yeah.
I know the gentleman from FinCom, um, Idly Divine, he's like, oh, how do I sign up for that?
That's right, you did say that.
Idly Divine, he said, oh, I, I don't remember getting anything, so we're like, we'll get something to you then.
I think, I think you're right, once they see it, and see how classy it, it's gonna look, I think people are gonna then be asking, how do I sign up?
Right, let's hope, because they have that, the athletics-
That would help.
Is difficult and, you know, I, I'm, personally, I do not wanna see those user fees go up anymore.
Right.
You're going on the record?
Yes, I'll go on the record and say that, I don't wanna see the user fees go up anymore. And that's not just a selfish thing, I just, I think it's, you know, we're at kind of the, the threshold there that shouldn't go up. Because I would hate to see athletes not be able to play what they wanna play due to very financial issues.
All right, anybody else have any questions about the athletics? You guys did a great job, I appreciate you waiting around.
Oh, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that we had you.
This is one of our funnest times of the year, right?
We've been waiting.
Waiting, yeah, you postponed us enough.
I have another question, no, I'm just kidding. Highlight. No, thank you both.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I hope you feel better, Ryan.
Yeah. Don't get discouraged about that summer camp, we'll get it out there.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Yeah, if I get sick, I'm gonna kill myself.
I was thinking the same thing.
Stay home.
Stay home if you don't feel good.
Okay, so we have administrative reports. I have, um, Principal Lucia.
Yes.
He's here to talk about, uh, middle and high school programs of study.
Tabs on this packet.
I know, I know. Pam does that.
I, she usually has tabs.
I usually do, I didn't, there's some time, I know, I-
Well, Nancy can throw those tabs on.
I can't find what I'm looking for, so I'm like, next meeting.
What do you think about that, Nancy, is that something we can handle?
Absolutely.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
You'll have tabs next meeting. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? I told them that you were the anchor on the winning eighth grade, uh, tug of war today.
With my slippery shoes.
Yes, with his slippery shoes. Good for you, good for you, I'm sure the kids-
He told me I was the judge, so I didn't dress for, for the action, but then, uh-
You had to dress the same.
Well, I wanted sneakers.
He likes to wear his-
The shoes slide.
Jeans and sneakers.
I think next year, Cheryl, oh, you won't be here next year. I was just gonna say that you should be a judge for the spelling bee.
Oh, I could still do that, probably.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
We couldn't, like, put you in at the last second in the spelling bee.
There's the evidence.
Oh, my goodness.
There's the evidence.
Oh, and anyone wanna see pictures?
There's the evidence.
Pass, pass it around.
Shall we zoom in?
I'm tweeting that out later.
Share it, yes.
Oh, great.
You should.
I am.
Anyway, uh, we can start with the middle school, there are no changes to the program of studies there. And we only have a few from the high school.
Thank you.
Um, the first one, I guess, needs a little bit of background, so, um, when we upgraded the, the Mac lab this year, um, the software, the Adobe suite of software that we owned, uh, wasn't compatible with the new Mac operating system. And unfortunately, Adobe, uh, doesn't sell the package anymore like a one-time fee, it's a subscription. But, uh, so that's the bad news. The good news is the subscription comes like, uh, for a hundred machines. So we can use it beyond the Mac lab, we can use it a lot of places, teachers can use it, students can use it. So we thought that we would offer a course, um, in the art department, which would teach the kids how to use that. So that is what, um, spark your imagination with Adobe Creative Apps is. And, um, I'm sure that it's gonna be very popular and it's a great skill for kids to learn, even if you're not a serious art student.
You could tie that, you could even tie that into business for like advertising.
Yep, marketing could use it and, yep, a lot of people could use it.
So not just the, the arts, you could-
Right.
You can design logos with it, maybe?
Yep, you do all kinds of stuff.
And charge.
Something Pam might be very interested in.
You can make videos, um, e- everything, you know, and Photoshop's in there, so you can learn how to, to use, uh, pictures and stuff like that. So it's a good skill that we would like to share with all of our students.
Are we sort of branding a class? Do we have any other, like, corporately named classes?
Um-
It just struck me as like-
No.
Is Adobe paying us to have this?
No.
Okay.
Um-
Yeah.
You can scratch it if you want, it's no big deal.
No, it just-
What, using the name, you're saying?
Yeah, like, it's just, it's very like-
Oh, like, advertising for them, you're saying?
Not the advertising, but it's like-
Yeah, giving them the-
It's a relevant, you know, skill that students need to have, I mean, just like there are courses about how to program with Java and-
Well, that's a, that's a language more than it, yeah.
I, I can scratch the Adobe.
I'm not, I'm not objecting, I just, it's, it just struck me as a-
I never thought about it like that, I guess.
Adobe has their package, absolutely, but there are twenty-seven other of the same essentially programs that do similar.
People know Adobe more than the other programs, you know, when you say Adobe, you know Photoshop, you know this, you know, it just, just stands out more. It's more well-known, yeah, that just stuff.
Okay.
It just caught my eye.
We overruled them.
I'll just say it quietly. Engineering the future, we're talking about.
Engineering the future, that, that is our, uh, our current engineering course, but we wanna add, um, prerequisites of C are better in physics, R honors physics, and C are better in foundations of engineering and architecture. So we really, um, we want kids to be able to use CAD before they go into that course, know how to do that. And a lot of the concepts they use, they would learn in physics, so we would, uh-
So who would likely take that, Peter?
Well, it's probably kids that, um, wanna take a second science or seniors that don't wanna take the biological sciences like anatomy and physiology and, and things like that.
So do you, and, cause engineering for the future is kind of a important topic, I think, right? If we're thinking about 21st century skills, I'm just curious, like, how many kids will actually take this? It sounds like if you put these prereqs in, it's gonna be a course that, it, you know, some kids that might be interested in taking it will not be able to take it.
Well, I think the idea, that, that may happen a little bit, but the idea and behind this is that there were kids that don't have the math skills that are signing up for this course and they struggle. So we wanna be clearer on what you need to be successful in this course. I, I will say that I am looking, well, I will recommend that in the future they find another CP course in science to go along with, um, environmental science. So I've mentioned that to Cerise Cothran already and she's, she's looking at that.
So do the CP kids and the honors kids get exposure to engineering?
They do, they do in the middle school with our tech and engineering class.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking-
So every kid gets that in the seventh and eighth grade. And then, uh, a bunch of kids then get into our, our, um, architectural and mechanical, uh, CAD courses.
Yeah, I, I'm just always thinking about those kids that are going on to college and the careers of the future, you know, and, you know, there are kids that aren't, you know, honors and placement kids that are going into those things. I just, I would just wouldn't wanna limit the opportunity for kids. I mean, I'd rather see kids struggle a little bit to do something that's gonna be good for them in their, you know, in their future than to-
prerequisites in our school are never hot and fast, they're a suggestion.
What I was gonna say, C are better.
If somebody, if somebody wants to get in there, a class or a particular level, we waive them in.
Okay, okay. I just don't wanna, you know, I just don't wanna, I don't, I, I wanna have in, opportunities for, for kids not be exclusionary, right?
I mean, like, could, most, most, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do most of the students that take this course now, are they seniors?
Um, I would say so, yes.
Okay, so it's an elective for them?
Yep.
So it couldn't be like two levels, like, uh, honors and, uh-
Well, we thought about that also, um, and had, had a more kind of basic one, but, um, we don't really have the staff to do that.
I mean, like, for instance, my son now takes it as a junior, and I, I think the reason he wanted to do it is cause he's kind of undecided about whether he wants to pursue an engineering or a business track and he wants to learn about engineering before he makes the final decision. But he wants to make the decision before, you know, his senior year, so he's taking it this year and he's, he's doing fine, but I do worry about him that he doesn't have, uh, I mean, he hasn't taken chemistry yet.
Yep.
He's taking physics concurrently.
Yep.
Um, and he took the, uh, foundations of engineering and architecture concurrently in the, in the first part of the year. And I'm, I'm just, I'm hoping, you know, that he has the foundational knowledge to, to do.
Well, I think you would know at this point in the year, if he didn't.
I just wonder if he wouldn't do, I, yeah, well, I just wonder if he wouldn't even do better if he took it at his senior year, you know?
Probably would.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why they, that's the prerequisite. Um, the, uh, the biz, I have, I, I guess I misunderstood something, so I wanna add something that you don't have on the, uh, in the, the business department. So what we're trying to do is delete some of the courses that we haven't run in several years. So one of those was honors business capstone, which you do have in front of you, but there are a couple other ones I'd like to put on the board. They would be Web two point O, Principles of Economics in Management and Leadership.
Hmm, what's the third one?
Manag- Management and Leadership. So what we've, we're trying to do and what we've been struggling with is we, we don't have the numbers of kids to run a, a lot of these courses. And, and we had, um, the idea that revolved around the school store that we would have, uh, an entrepreneurial program where kids would start off with creativity and then go into entrepreneurship. And then that would lead in, and that's where they really get into working in the store and lead into, uh, management and then cap it all off at the end with a business capstone course. Well, the, we just don't have the flexibility and the schedule. So we have like a couple kids that want entrepreneurship and a couple kids that want management. And so we're kinda throwing them all together into one class, um, entrepreneurship. And, um, they will get the same things that these courses do, we're just not able to do them, uh, separately. Um, Principles of Economics, for fifteen years I've been trying to find a home for that and kids in our school just don't want it. So it started in the business department, it went to the math department, actually went to the social studies department, back to the business department, and I can't get two kids to take this.
It's a scary title.
Sounds, it is, just the sound.
We changed the name about around, we changed the name many times, but it's just something that kids aren't interested in here. So, uh, I get, we're giving up on it. Um, Web, Web two point O was, uh, so, again, that the concepts in Web two point O, uh, hit everywhere and so kids just aren't taking it as an elective, they're learning all the skills in a lot of their other courses, especially in the business department. So those are three courses we wanna take off the books and that will kinda funnel kids more into what we are offering and that do run. And then there's the name change for our, uh, ninth grade creativity course, uh, they wanna change it to creative problem solving from creative, creativity, inspiration and innovation.
Oh, okay.
We feel that's just more of, uh, that title, creative problem solving, is better reflective of the, of the content of the course.
Be, so it's gonna be?
Creative problems.
Creative problem solving, same course, same curriculum, just the name change.
Yep. And that's, and that's a requirement, graduation requirement.
And then the ma-
And it's a business elective, of course, no.
No, yes, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah.
Freshman in business.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, say creative problem solving in business?
I don't know.
No, cause some people might-
Okay.
So Peter, one thing we're gonna have to think about, not tonight, but is this issue of the state is probably gonna mandate, you know, computer science be a, be a, you know, be a required, yeah. So we're gonna just have to think about that for the future when we-
Yeah, it's probably going to affect, you know, what we teach in those graduation requirements.
Well, and we have computer programming, honors computer programming, which isn't exactly the same thing, but it's related.
They want everybody to take it.
Oh, oh, okay.
As a graduation requirement. So I, you'll have to just study, um, the frameworks when they develop them and then see, you know-
And good luck getting a teacher, because every place in the state is gonna be scrambling around looking for a certified computer science teacher, so.
What about anything global, like, you know, global business practices or even, you know, global, I don't know? Current events, global modern issues, global-
Well, we do that, we do modern issues and that's global and we do, um, there's some of the business courses and like, and marketing is global now, there's a global touch to it. And, um, this economics course a couple years ago was global economics and it still didn't get anybody.
Didn't make it fly, okay.
We dressed that in many uniforms, so.
The kids were smart enough to know that.
Soon as they see economics, they get about it.
It's like trying to dress up broccoli.
Social studies as a problem in business type of course.
There's not a lot of teachers to teach, that's the problem, right? There's not, and adding classes right now makes it difficult because you're not gonna have enough teachers to teach them, that's the problem.
Usually when we add an elective, um-
You take something away, right?
We take something away.
Yeah.
So we do, but we do hit the globe a lot in the social studies department, especially with the, the modern issues, um, classes. There's modern issues one and two, and those are all global.
Courses, they're great, they're, yeah, my children learned a lot in them.
But I know what you're saying, like, there's, I remember my stu-, my children taking like a bioethics class. And, you know, it was really a very interesting class, cause it was very pertinent to today's world.
Global ethics.
So a lot of those kind of, you know, those kind of, you know, we have to change some of our electives sometimes to be a little bit more in ti- in cartoon.
And we do, that process of thinking about that happens every year.
I think, yeah, my son is taking a course called Global Ethics at, in college.
Yep.
Yeah, well, cause it, you know, again, it's, you wanna talk about teaching kids to think, you know, and to, you know, you know, assess, you know, what information is out there in the world and make decisions about, you know, how would I, you know, how would I decide, what would I decide, how would, you know?
And finally, in the math department, we haven't run SAT prep math for ever.
Why?
In my fifteen years, uh, no one signed up for it.
Really?
And then we-
I paid, I paid a lot of money to go there.
Well, nobody took it and we used to do math and English. In my first couple years, w- we had some English and then the numbers went way down. The numbers were, you know, two or three kids in math, tops, and we don't have the staff to do it now, anyway.
Hundreds of dollars I paid for every child to take Kaplan courses.
But, you know, we could probably offer, uh, after school or evening class, you know, using one of our teachers, still pay that teacher a decent amount of money and still make, you know, money for the schools that you could put back into your programs.
I sent Michael down to Danvers.
A lot of people go to St. John's and-
Right.
Danvers High School.
So, you know, a lot of those places, though, give you like a, um, you know, guarantee so many points, you know, things like that.
They do?
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to charge quite as much.
Really? No, I would say, I would say we wouldn't charge as much, but we'd be-
No, I know. We can guarantee too, it's easy to get a refund around here, right? Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the changes to the high school. Program of studies.
Program of studies.
But it's just the high school, right?
There are no changes in the middle school.
Okay, so, um, changes to the high school program of studies as presented by Principal Peter Lucia.
Second.
Second, any further discussion, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, financial report, next.
Okay.
Okay, Suzanne, you're up.
Got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so I've included the, um, the general fund financial report, um, ending roughly the end of February. Um, and then I have, um, some revolving accounts, some transfers. Um, the budget, you know, so far, so good, I would say. We, um, we haven't had to freeze it, so that's good. Um, we have seen, you know, working with Jack, um, the special ed has not run over mainly because we haven't used a, a lot of our transportation money this year, uh, for a couple of reasons. And, um, we still have some tuition money as well for similar reasons. So there hasn't been a need to freeze, which is good. Um, we still watch our subs, they're, you know, not doing well. We have a lot of people out, so, um.
Out for long term?
Long term subs, uh, we've had quite a few, so that.
Those are minuses, right?
Yep. So, yeah, but, you know.
We cut it and then, so that's the thing, when we cut it.
Right, I had put in a lot more and then we ended up having to cut it out and only, and even in next year, we've only put in what we had the last couple of years. So we never have a chance to increase it, because we have so many other lines that we have to fill.
And we're looking up there.
Right, exactly. So, and the revolving accounts, um, you know, the food service is looking a little better, I think. Um, they definitely have had an increase in their, uh, participation, which has shown in their revenue. But we have had to add, um, an extra person too, so we're not reaping all the benefits of that.
You know, that's the thing, you want the participation to go up, but then you have to, you have to meet the demands of that.
Exactly, and adding the coffee shop, and then he adjusted it a little bit, so we have someone in the afternoon, it's making a little bit of money.
I was gonna say, is the coffee shop working? I know it's still in its sort of honeymoon phase.
Yeah, it is, um, and the afternoon hasn't really progressed it.
No?
Not really.
What time is it open until?
Until three o'clock, I think, it's like two thirty to three.
I thought it was three thirty, but maybe.
I think it's only like a half an hour, forty-five minutes.
Okay.
It's like when the kids are getting out and going to their, their, uh, activities. Um, what else do we have? I have some transfers for you to approve, and I don't know, do you have any, did you have any specific questions?
So the athletic revolving account, so, the assumption, you know, that's the thing that scares me, is the assumption of the spring signups, you know? We're hoping that they're at least equal to last year and we'll come up with that. So the deficit, I always hate to see, um, obviously a deficit with it. But, um, but your note too, reminding us of the money that we had to take over.
And you have to keep in mind too, of the, all the scholarships that we give, you know? That's, that's a good chunk of money that really comes out of the athletic revolving account.
And that deficit is less than it typically is.
Right. Would that need to be, would that just be a year-end profit margin deficit? Or would we need to cover that out of the budget?
Well, I mean, if you thought about it, I would think it, we should cover it out of the budget, because it's really, it's not the athletic, exactly. It's not really the athletic revolving fund, can't handle it, you know?
Right.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's a left pocket.
And the number's always changing a little bit too, you know? But we had quite a few, we've had quite a few so far this year.
I mean, maybe we'll, maybe with two new coaches, that, you know, people will, you know, maybe the numbers, we, we actually didn't ask Guy that, did we?
Well, I said, he did, he did give us.
He did say they looked good, when, earlier, I had asked him.
Because the winter numbers, it, it was relatively low, and I think overall it was like thirteen less athletes over the winter.
But he has more lacrosse than he did last year, so, so that's good.
Maybe the number would be.
The baseball looked.
Baseball's always pretty full, yeah.
Yeah, so let's hope that the spring is at least equal and not better.
And that would take, the deficit would be probably covered if it was.
But we still. Wouldn't Guy already have those numbers?
Well, he would, we didn't ask him though.
Yeah, I was just, I was just thinking.
Yeah, we do, because it was more winter, he was.
Right, he would've known, because they're already signed up right now.
Right, but there's still, like, the season's just starting, so.
Yeah, so he could still have some kids out.
I heard Ryan say they lost one kid.
I can get those figures though from Cheryl.
Yeah, we can find out, yes.
I mean, I would just be curious to see where it all shuffled.
And of course, the preschool revolving account.
Yeah, well, yeah, we know what the issues are there.
Right. Even though enrollment is up, the fund balance projected at year end will be lower.
But we've added, we added a couple of positions this year that weren't on there before.
It's just not equal to, it, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Well, the lottery yesterday was pretty light.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was pretty light.
I meant to ask you.
I was just looking for the, um, she said there were eighteen families that came for the, there were, uh.
Eighteen?
She said one month, well, I mean, that's the people for those, that's new, right, so it's not the people returning. What, was there about sixty, was there about sixty returning, did she say?
Um, I think there were like sixty-seven moving to kindergarten.
Oh, that's what I'm remembering, okay.
Which would leave theoretically sixty.
Yeah, because it was like a hundred and twenty-seven.
Yeah, it was one twenty-something.
The weather may have kept people away. I mean, I talked to one person who didn't go, because she thought, I mean, I know it wasn't snowing, but she was anticipating that it would be snowing, so.
I know, a lot of the things got canceled.
Majority of them wanted Tuesday, Thursday, half day, or Monday through Friday, full day.
So I told her to get, get.
We will take them.
Yeah. And she said there's no one on the waiting list, because I asked her that, I said, is there anybody on the waiting, and she said there's nobody on the waiting list.
So, and I know there's obviously plenty of time, but when do we determine, like, the numbers?
When we start making decisions.
Yeah, I mean, when does that, when does that date, Margaret, that you really?
I will be honest, I've been here eight years and it's, we've never had this problem.
We've never had this problem, right?
Really?
Usually there's a waiting list that we're worried.
When I look at, I mean, I'm trying to put the positive spin on, the reason why we started the lottery was because, um, there was some unfairness the way children were registered. Some, some parents felt like, and again, I'm remembering back years ago, they felt like they had, um, they had wanted to register for something, but somebody beat them like into the office and gave their check before someone else.
Yeah, they literally used to.
So we established the lottery to kind of just be more fair, to, to avoid that. So it wasn't to preclude anybody, so now it just, it, it was more of a fairness. So now I look at it, it's, it's okay, so just come and register.
Right.
It just, it just, now the next person that comes in and wants a spot will get it. And so it really, it, it may not mean that fewer people want it, it's just that, you see what I'm trying to say, that I'm having trouble articulating?
Right.
It's not that we maybe had so many more, it was just we were trying to establish that fairness.
But did, in the past, if fifty people came out to the lottery, whatever that number was, how many of those fifty signed up? So did we?
Everyone signed up.
Or how many, how many actually attended in September, that's what I mean, I'm sorry.
Um, well, that is an interesting question, because every.
Because I know we were in the lottery and we didn't attend.
Right, and there were, if there were people on the waitlist, what we would say to them is, there was movement. So if you're on the waitlist, chances are you will get a spot, because people do, they move, they make other decisions, things change financially. So, um, so there is quite a bit of movement, some in, some out.
How many, and, and I certainly don't expect you to know a number, but how many typically add on in the summer? I mean, is that a handful, or is that typically a meaningful number? And that, and by summer, I, I mean kind of anything after March.
You know, when somebody who might go, say, three days a week, but then they decide to go five?
No, like new, so, you know, hey, I missed the lottery, but we wanna come, or we moved into town, or.
That's kind of a hard question, because if we, if we were full, we might've.
They'd be waitlisted, maybe not get in, right. Yeah, I guess my question is really, when are we confident that we know we're gonna have seventy-five or ninety, like, yeah?
Well, and I guess how long, like, at the waitlist at its longest, how many people would be in there-ish?
I've seen about six or seven at its longest, not a whole lot more than that. It's usually people who want half day that are on the waiting list. Or they want, they want more days than are available, so they'll end up signing up for what, one day, because it's all this lot.
A couple years ago, everyone wanted full day, and there wasn't anything, last year, everyone wanted half day.
Yeah, so it does vary, yeah. But almost everybody from the waiting list gets accommodated.
Exactly, right.
It is, it's, it's, it's very interesting.
Okay, well, we'll have to watch that.
So sometimes what they'll do is they'll sign up for, let's say, two full days, but they say, well, I really want half days. But since you don't have half days, I'll take the slot that I can get, that, we've seen that people do that.
Well, I was just gonna say, like, and maybe the numbers don't make sense, but if we have a influx of people who want half day, why aren't we offering more half day?
Well, I don't think that's necessarily true this year.
Okay.
So that, again, that was, that was what people wanted last year, but I'm not sure.
It's fickle, right, because it goes back and forth, it's non-dependent.
It puts new families every year.
Yeah, so, um, Mrs. Harding did ask if she could send it out now advertising for non-george companies, because the number that was four.
And to put that in the grapevine.
So now we can look and feel, and that might bring in one people also.
That has in the past, she puts out the sandwich board and advertises, brings in a few families anyway.
Is the, the fifty-nine number, the end of the year number, what's that compared to the budget? Is that about where, in terms of budget book for next year, or we expected the end of the year?
Exactly, yep.
I just didn't have that number up. So we're at least, yeah, we're at least on track.
Right, yeah, exactly. It's a good place to be.
It's a dangerous track, but we're on track.
Exactly.
Is this the, um, the original copy that I signed, it doesn't look like it? Can I sign this one?
Sure.
That's fine, yep. Um, okay, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the budget transfers as presented by Director of Finance and Operations Suzanne Southern. So moved, second, uh, discussion?
Do we new, oh, we normally do like line numbers on a total, and I don't know if that matters.
You say, usually say line item blank to blank, right?
But they aren't numbered, like.
Oh, they aren't.
Oh.
Well, that would be a problem.
So I can save for the total.
One twenty-two.
Right, I can save for the total amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six oh four ninety-eight.
Yeah, you can do that.
Eighty-two. So moved.
Hold on, they don't tie, they're up by sixteen cents.
Yeah, eighty-two, and that's what, when you said.
Okay, I'll have to redo that for you.
So which, which number do you want them to approve?
Um, approve the higher one, the ninety-eight cents.
The one, the extra sixteen cent?
Yeah.
Oh, that's one I did.
Okay, good.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Here's a sign up too. So, let's see, where am I here?
Okay, now we have a bus contract that we have to approve. So we had one.
One vendor.
And it's the same one that we have now.
Yes, the current one, North Reading Transportation.
So that eleven percent increase for that first year, how, how common is it to be that high?
It was very common this year, I saw a lot of people on the listserv, they had as high as like fifteen and sixteen percent for the first year. And then it's two percent for the second and third year.
It was like two and three, or one and two, or, yeah.
We got eleven, one, one.
We got eleven, two, two, actually, yes, we did.
But we actually budgeted four.
Twenty-one thousand dollars less.
Right.
Okay, so.
We're like twenty-one, five, short.
Okay, how does their, um, their athletic, uh?
They went up twenty-five cents a mile, but they kept the same waiting time.
Okay, which was high anyways.
Mm-hmm.
So they didn't increase that, so that's good.
No, they didn't increase the waiting time.
Okay, so, so they went up by twenty-five cents a mile. And this is three years?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions about it before I make a motion? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the North Reading Transportation Company, company, approve the North Reading Transportation Company as a transportation provider for the district for, uh, school years twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, so now we can talk about, uh, school choice.
We'll need you to sign that for me though, and get it back to me, so I can send it to him, the bus company.
So school choice, we have to discuss in this year, um, what's today playing? So I think the, the big, the big question is, do we wanna continue to be a school choice district? And then if the answer is yes, then we can, you know, discuss the recommendations, which I think is fifteen to the ninth grade?
Yeah, Peter said he could do fifteen.
Right, fifteen.
I do have an update that we do have two less students that we just found out.
Is that in here?
No.
We just found that out.
I just found it out, Nancy and I just found out yesterday.
So that, um, I'm coming back?
No, that, just for our current number, is, is two less, yep.
Okay.
So, so that currently we have thirty-seven students, that include, that's what, that means, that's what we have.
So what is the procedure when a school choice student does leave in the middle of the year? Like in terms of, um, you know, if it's at the middle school, middle high school, that the secretary.
And then have left right now, they, they may have been left.
Do they just stop showing up one day?
No, I think they have to, I think they have to go through the register, with, Sandra Kelly, I believe, is the person.
You know, they have to, they go back and then records are requested from those schools.
A new school.
Yeah, they don't notify us as.
Right, I think what you're asking is what's the process? And that's one of the things that we're, we're cleaning up with this, with, uh, Sandra in particular, um, is.
We were checking numbers and then just happened to find out that two people left.
So the secretaries who are cha-, tracking school choice, when somebody leaves for school choice, they need to notify our office right away.
Right.
So that we, we know that, so we can accommodate for that.
So if, um, if a student is choiced out, and then they come back, do, in the middle of the year, do we, does the town get prorated? Or is it still the, they do get reimbursed the difference?
It's the same way we, we get prorated, we lose money prorated when a student leaves.
Okay, so they, so it's, it goes the same way if they come back?
They figure it out at the end of the year, on that final payment.
Okay. So we rely on.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say.
I think the reason why I'm asking that too, is because I talked to Mike Farrell, because we were talking about wittier students, and I had known a few came back, and he was like, they did, and he wasn't aware of it. So I just wonder what the communication is.
I think we need to.
With that too.
Well, I think, I think, uh, that the town deals directly with vocational, we don't have anything to do with that.
Okay, well, I mean, as far as.
But he wasn't aware of it.
Right.
You know, so I just wonder how that was communicated to him.
Figure that out.
To make sure that they get the reimbursement.
We know that the student re-enrolls, I guess we could let him know, but we gotta know, we've gotta know.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask a question on the school choice revolving? Is the carry forward thirty-one or eleven?
Um, I, let me see.
Because there's a total column. I didn't, I did, I just saw your projected FYE team carryover.
I have to find it. I think it was thirty-one.
Okay, well, that's much better than I...
That's from this year, it was carried over at the beginning of this year. Or what are you looking at?
I'm on your...
Oh, yes, that's, that was what we carried forward, yes.
And we're, we're expecting carryforward, there's a thirty-one, and then there's an eleven?
It, it says at the bottom, Michael.
Okay, oh, so it's a thirty-one.
Rejection is.
Okay, I had seen the eleven, and that's why I got scared if we were losing two half-year students, okay, it's better than I thought.
Because we had taken a couple of positions off of there this year.
Right, okay.
So we're not losing, we're not losing any students to graduation?
This year.
This coming year, but the following year, we will.
Following year, we'll lose nine.
Okay. So, so the question is, do we, do we want to at least replace, you know, so, open slots and at least think about replacing those kids? So you're, you know, and realizing that the salaries, remember, go up in that, because we've got salaries in there, so, you know, Peter said that he felt, I was thinking of ten kids, would, would help us get a little cushion as well as cover those things, but Peter said he felt he could take fifteen. Uh, Nancy, what, remind me, we had a conversation about this, where we had four.
But do we get fifteen?
We didn't.
Well, well, we didn't get six, we, but we didn't just, I thought we opened sixth grade too, I thought we...
Yeah, I thought we did too, I thought we did.
I think we were looking for twenty-one kids, which I don't think we...
We didn't even get that, it was seventh grade, wasn't it?
I don't think it was Pembroke.
I think it was seventh.
Yeah, no, I think it was...
It must have been seventh. It was seventh grade, and it was ninth grade, and I don't think we got the numbers that we wanted.
Oh, we certainly didn't get all fifteen or whatever we were doing across the grades. Nancy, what, we have four or five already, right, that have applied for ninth grade?
Four ninth grades, and one was for first grade.
Those were just unsolicited, right?
Sure, they're just...
And we've talked, those, we assume they sent it out to ten different schools, just to get their name out.
Yeah, we are, sure, yeah. Well, I, you know, I know of a couple that have, had approached me and said that they had, they were coming if they got accepted. They, I just said, well, you just have to put your application, because I don't know, you know, I don't know if we're opening any.
School choice is always a difficult topic for me, because I, I don't want to make the decision based on our financial need. But I have to be mindful of our financial need, and I also have to be mindful of what the decision to bring in these students will, how that will impact.
Yeah, that is the balance.
Right, so I go back and forth with this, um, in my mind all the time. Like, should, should we be a school choice district, should we not? I do think it's great that we do, um, have students that want to, uh, attend our schools, and I do think that they share a lot, I think, um, you know.
I think it's been an enriching experience for a lot of our students on several different, you know, levels, just to get to know these other students from other towns, but, you know, still relatively close. Um, I mean, I, I question, I, I think it could be, I mean, I know there are lots to consider, but to me, it's kind of a luxury to, to discontinue it, I mean, we have, we're just not in a position right now where I personally think it would be a responsible financial move to, to discontinue it. I, I think I would personally be in favor of continuing it, both because I, you know, I, I've gotten to know some of these choice students, and I think they're, they're wonderful, wonderful, um, kids, children, and, I mean, the ones that I know. Um, and, you know, so culturally, I see a positive, and financially, I see a positive, and we're just in a position where I, we can't, I don't, I don't feel like it's responsible to make a choice to say goodbye to, to that, uh, money right now.
Right, especially when a part of that revolving accounts, revolving account helps the athletic, um, budget, which is...
Well, and so, we've consistently opened slots at the high school, kindergarten, there has not been room, do we have a projection? I mean, and I know, we really don't...
We ask Margaret this question every year on March forty-second.
And I know it's an August kind of thing, I, I mean, um, I mean, and I understand why we're not doing that, and I understand why at the high school more slots are available.
I mean, this, this year, our kindergartens are twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, and I remember, again, as you say, last March saying it was too close, and then they really did fill up quickly, so... And this year, we, we do know the number coming over for Pearly is already high.
Yeah, I think the father's daughter would probably be possible this year.
Is, Peter, is there a, I mean, it's thirty-seven students, and split through all the grades, obviously, but... Do they, do the students stand out, or are they, I mean, can you tell that there are thirty-seven students among the grades? Or it's totally homogenous, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it doesn't affect your class size in a negative way, I mean, you don't end up having to have higher class sizes.
Yeah, that's why you have that in there, I knew that, you know.
It's not like it's costing you more money to bring them in, because the seats are in the room anyway.
Because we were losing ninth graders to other schools, and so they were just filling in, as you were saying, those seats, so...
That's right.
It's sort of balanced, not quite balanced out, but because we lose more kids in ninth grade than we have coming in.
But if there are theoretically fifteen, you know, fif- ten to fifteen percent of the ninth grade class would, could theoretically be choice students, if we have about a hundred kids in the grade, does that, does eighth grade of that hundred kids turning into a ninth grade of eighty-five plus fifteen, does that radically change that class?
No.
Or, okay.
What do you mean, the dynamic?
The dynamic, the culture, the dynamics, like, is it, or is it just, here's Jimmy, and he wasn't here last year, and...
I think the big thing too with me with school choice is that you can't, you don't know anything about that student. So you don't know what is coming into the district in terms of special education services, in terms of, um...
Personality.
Yeah, just, uh, issues that they've had in other districts, things like that, so...
How come Barbie, can't there be a...
No, I think it's state law, right?
It's just...
You can't discriminate on that, you know, again, you, just, the only thing it says is that, there's two things it says, you have to do a lottery if you advertise, you get more slots than you advertise, and you have to give preference for siblings, if you already have, um, you know, a student in the district.
So, so, Peter, just to, um, your personal opinion on this, the, the school, the choice students that you have, have you seen like a, you know, a overwhelming amount of, or even a small amount of disciplinary issues? Or things that, you know...
Needing extra resources.
Right, costing the, the school money in terms of that, like...
No, the, I would say that in my time here, the choice kids are no more likely to be a discipline problem than kids in Georgetown, and there are more kids in Georgetown that are discipline issues, because it's just the percentage, because there's more kids. So I, I don't see that there, there have been a problem. Like, like Suzanne said, I, I don't know what kind of, uh, if, if the kids are coming in with special ed services and what that looks like, we have no way of knowing that. But I, I think it's a great program, and I, I really support it for all the reasons that you guys brought up.
Well, like, I like to think that these are kids who maybe their home district doesn't have the expectations that they want to achieve bigger and better in life, and they're looking at our district as, has all this to offer, and, um, you know, kind of like bettering themselves, I like to look at it that way.
We had a valedictorian that was a choice student, so he was back.
Wow. Right, so it's almost like they are feeling that they got that, that spot, and they really need to step, you know, it was a privilege to get this spot.
They have to get themselves here, that's a, that's a, that's not an easy task sometimes, you know, because we don't do anything for...
When I was student teaching a long time ago, um, I student taught in Concord, Massachusetts, and we, the Metco program at the time, and the students, again, I mean, again, this was elementary school, but the kids and their families were committed to bettering their education, and, like, they, I don't know, feel like they stepped it up a notch.
Right, yeah, I lived in a town when I went to school with Metco program too, so I, I, I agree to that, your perspective on that.
I think it's a good program, I mean...
Adds the diversity that the town doesn't have.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion to, to open fifteen slots for ninth grade.
Second.
The eighteen, nineteen school year.
Well, you're second, you don't have to move it.
Oh, I don't, okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we will advertise those spaces.
We'll continue with our school choice.
Start the process.
Thank you, Peter, for adding your perspective on that, too. Okay, Baker Adams.
Here we go.
Baker Adams.
Are we ready to sign for Baker Adams?
Yep.
I lost Baker Adams.
I did too, that's one of my favorite, yep.
Well, that's a nice thing to the school committee, yes.
So did we, so did we move the date up a little bit?
Yes.
In terms of getting the application out to the kids?
Well, let's see what we did here, hold on here. So, yes, so, um, yeah, I gotta find him. Okay, so they had, they had asked, if I remember correctly, they had asked to get it sort of close to the early April.
Yeah.
So that's why we moved it up, saying we would, you know, basically start advertising it, distribute it, um, to the guidance office around that time. Because usually we do it, remember, after April vacation, I think.
Well, that's good, I think April second is good, that will give them ample opportunity to get it in by May eleventh. I mean, we always have a couple that come in after, I would hope that...
Well, I also figured April vacation was in there too, right, so if somebody was really scrambling, they'd have the vacation to...
It's not a particularly long...
It's not a, no, but you gotta do essays, so, you know, they should think, that should take them a little more time than, you know, the general...
So then we'll get them by the fifteenth, we'll meet by the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all doable, and then...
And then we give it out at graduation.
Right, so, okay.
So they're due May eleventh.
Yeah, so we should get them like the...
What does May eleventh fall on?
Because it's a Friday.
It is a Friday.
Cheryl's gonna be on vacation, based on...
Oh, when you're on vacation.
So I, that was the problem last year, too, wasn't it? I know, although I'm not missing any school committee meetings.
I was gonna say, I don't know of any school vacation in May.
Um, I, I'm gonna be away from the twelfth to the twenty-third.
Oh, wow.
See you two days later when you're back.
Yeah, have fun on vacation.
Yeah.
I think you participated last year, low, by, by like...
I don't remember, but I'm not gonna miss a school committee meeting, I, we worked it out around...
But I wonder, that's nice of you, Cheryl, but I, I wonder, Cheryl, if you could get them as they come in? I know, you know, you know, so you could get like a one-up on them, what are your thoughts on that?
Is that legal or fair?
I would think it would be...
I don't think it matters.
Fair, yeah, I mean, if kids get them in, then my kids directly too.
I prefer them that way, rather than a stack of thirty arriving on the same day.
Oh, but then again, wait a minute, you're leaving on the thirteenth.
Yeah.
And they're due by, okay, so, yeah, so, they get, but April second, they're gonna get them, so maybe kids will get them in early.
Yeah, well, we collect them and say, this is the drop-in.
Yeah, because we gotta, we gotta trickle, I mean, there are certainly a bunch that come in the day of or the day before, but, uh, there's definitely a trickle.
What do you think?
Yeah, would, I, I'm happy to do anything.
Well, do you still want us to do the, um, redacted and the numbers, because when they trickle, you know, you, you can't number them till they...
I'm sorry, those redactions really don't...
The, well, because you can, you can number them right out of Survey Monkey, so, so, which is the easier way to do it, honestly. Um, and I don't know that the, my own opinion, I don't know that the redactions have helped that much, or have, have...
Right.
Been that important of a factor.
Okay, so, I know Lori used to redact, like, everywhere, his, her, you know, I mean, all that stuff, do you want to know the names?
We can, when we email them out, we can easily just remove the name off the, off the top.
Just off the top.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up, it's up to you, I mean, I've seen committees do it differently.
Yeah, I don't even, I, I personally don't, I think...
I mean, you guys figure it out.
It takes a half a second to take the name off, but either way.
You would what, Michael?
I think the names are fine, having them though, why, I...
What, what did you say, Michael?
Taking the name off takes a half a second, it's, you can automate it, so it's not...
But again, like, everything, because...
No, no, I'm saying just the field, the name.
So if you're just gonna redact, I don't know, I, I personally think it's...
Why don't you guys, you know, think to let us know, because, but...
Timeline works.
The timeline work for you guys?
The timeline.
It's fine, yeah, well, because even if I get them by, I can bring them with me, I'm good, but, but we have to meet...
She's sitting by the beach.
So, the, so the twenty-fourth, or the, I could meet the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth, if we have to do it by the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll, we'll figure all that out, so if this timeline looks fine, then... Okay, and then we also have, um, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Baker Adams scholarship process and timeline as presented.
So, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we also have the superintendent's evaluation timeline. So, April twentieth.
Vote on the final goals, on the, on the removing, I don't remember what number we took out.
We removed...
I know we discussed it, but did we actually, like...
We did vote, remember when we were questioning the goals?
We took five, we took five and...
Took one and fi...
I wanna say five and seven, but...
Oh, really?
No, one, it was your one, it was one and five, it was one and five.
Yeah, we did...
Did we, did we vote, okay, I just, I didn't remember.
Because we talked about it, I think, at a meeting when you weren't here, and then we waited, or you weren't here, and then we waited.
Talked about, we took one out. Here.
No, I wasn't here.
One of you wasn't here, and we agreed, okay, and then we did vote.
Okay.
Okay.
That's awesome.
So how do you think this timeline looks?
So let me ask you this question, so what, because we've kind of go back and forth on this, what, what materials do you want? It sounds like people did not like the electronic.
We should not do what we did last year.
Okay, so electronic, no, so, um, I...
I like the notebook.
You like the binder, I know, I know you like the binder.
I mean, I would almost say if we can, there's a lot of pages. If the binder would be scan, no, 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 I'm saying if the binder could be scannable.
That's a lot, though.
That's a lot.
I don't know what it takes to scan.
I mean, but those are all electronic documents, correct?
I think we have all of them electronic, yeah.
So you could just save them to a Google Drive, which is easy enough to do, and then people like me could look at it, and then we print out a copy for those who want to look at it.
As you look at me.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can work something out, okay.
But just not the system.
Yeah, I don't want to do that system, that was awful.
What system was it?
It was, it was, it was the Oasis.
Oasis.
Yeah, it didn't really, it didn't work for them.
We're just gonna do the, Peter was helping us, yeah.
We all had to call Peter, I think, yeah.
Let's just go with you.
The Google Drive would probably work well.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely figure something out.
Then you could all be in there.
Exactly.
So this timeline looks good.
Okay.
And you have, you know, from the twenty-third to the third to, um, meet with the superintendent. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the process and timeline for the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have the school committee self-evaluation. It's doable, it looks like it can be a business proposal in May, but...
It'll be, it will do it on the same, you know, on the same date, so, it's kind of what we've done before.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the process and timeline for the school committee self-evaluation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Some donations.
Okay, we have, uh, an anonymous donation of, um, thirty dollars for the food service program. It was very kind of this individual or family to think of the kids, um, we appreciate all these donations.
This is the ongoing one that we get literally every month. This is the ongoing one that we get literally every month, so they have been for.
I know.
For a year, like, it's almost been a year, yeah.
Very, very kind of them to keep thinking of them. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the anonymous donation in the amount of thirty dollars for the food service program to support students in arrears.
So moved.
Second. Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How is that going, Suzanne, in terms of, um, so that account is, is.
What account?
Plenty, the one that this goes to, those donations.
They, they have, he has a, a, um, an account set up at each school that the lunch ladies can use.
Right.
You know, at their discretion.
Where actually is it? It's not in the revolving account? It's somewhere.
No, it's in the revolving account.
Okay.
It's not separated to, I, but I do have a donation's number, but I just don't have it with me. I can let you know though.
Yeah, I'm curious what the.
The total has been.
Do we have people still in arrears?
We do have people still in arrears. Actually, we've seen an increase in the last couple of few weeks.
Really? An increase in.
People in arrears.
People in arrears.
Is it people or dollars? Is it like a couple of people falling behind or is it?
It's both.
But how can that be with the way the pol- with the way the policy is?
Well, I think that um something came out, um, I'm not sure if it was from Desi or, um, I'm not sure who put it out there, but it came through our offices. That the state is really, does not want people calling out the children and they don't want the children to be affected at all, so. You can't even say, so the lunch ladies really feel, you know, they having a hard time even saying, you need to tell your parents that you're, you know, your power's getting low. Because a lot of times they might make a little comment like that.
Sure.
And they just really don't want you saying anything to the children at all, which, which, you know.
It's not the children's, it's not really the children's.
So we've been making, um, been trying to make it a little more personal by calling and reaching out to the parents and, you know, explaining to them that.
Okay, so how does that then impact our policy?
Well, it, it.
That kinda overrides it.
It kind of, it kind of overrides it a little bit.
Well, is there anything in our policy that says we tell the kids? I mean, that's the only thing that's changing is we're, they still.
Well, if they come through the line though and they have a lunch.
Right.
And you can't say anything to them, but they have a negative balance.
So you can't say you have to put it away.
You can't say you have to put it away. I'd have to read our policy again to see what needs to change.
So anyway, um, you know, the, the lunches are being given to the children.
Yeah.
So there's no more cheese sandwiches?
No, there has not been any cheese sandwiches. And I, and I don't know why it's just been an influx.
Lunch mothers too, they don't wanna.
Yeah, exactly. And you know, I have to say, it's more at Pembroke right now, so.
Okay, so then you call.
I've been calling and.
And have you been getting a response like, okay, sorry about that?
Yeah, I mean, we had a couple of families that, you know, had some extenuating circumstances, so I just, you know, I'm working with them and told them they need to reach out because we will definitely help them, you know. We just need to know.
Sure.
Yeah.
How much thirty-seven hundred dollars would you say is, is essentially bad debt? Is any of that bad debt that we should be writing off or is that all?
Well, actually, I'm looking, that's, that's kind of a mixture of the old, we have some inactives, which are about eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
Um, and I actually was uh talking with the auditors, because I'd like to kinda get rid of that.
We should just write it off, yeah, if we're, if we don't have a realistic.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
These are a lot of families that are just aren't even in the district.
Yeah.
So I'd like to do that at the end. I was gonna bring that up at budget and finance.
Okay. Um, okay, so as we heard earlier, we have two field trips and the PTA has generously um donated to both of them, so their support on these two field trips is very much appreciated. Um, I'll make a motion to accept a one thousand dollar donation from the PTA, which supports the first grade field trip to Seacoast Science Center on May twenty-third.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, and then we also have a um second donation for the other field trip. I'll make a motion to accept the uh PTA donation in the amount of eight sixty-five fifty. To offset the cost of the fourth grade trip to.
Yeah, so that's why. I think, I think, I'm wondering if.
That was for second grade.
No, I.
Well, fourth grade's going to the museum.
Says fourth grade right on it.
I know, that's why when we, when we, earlier when we were talking for second, I'm like, I don't think, so.
Well, those two were here because they were out of state.
They were, but I know Heidi had her stuff, you know, in and we, and she was good to go. And then it was the second grade field trip.
Second grade? So, okay, so I was gonna ask a question and, so second grade on here says, PTA sponsored the trip and gave eight sixty-seven thirty-five.
Yes.
Kindergarten went on a trip yesterday and we still haven't approved that donation.
Oh, but look at it's different. That's eight sixty-seven and.
Well, but that's not bad, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I.
Very graciously accepted donations, but we need to talk to PTA.
Yeah, we already did that, so I don't know what happened there. Um, I know that, you know, I put out, I put out, you know, a memo about that. And, and I talked directly to Erin about it and I said, you know, I, I don't know if it has to do with when they, their board meets, because they don't meet that often. I, I, I don't know. But, so I don't know what, where the confusion is, because I know that the original first grade trip was the one Heidi was all good to go. Remember, we, she was on the agenda before and then we had to bump her. Um, so I made it very clear that the PTA trip had to come in at the same time, that, you know, the donation had to come in at the same time. Kristen was an afterthought, right? She wasn't originally on the radar screen, so like, she just ended up on the agenda, you know, said, can I come over and do it too? So I assumed that.
Right.
The check was here for that and obviously it isn't. This looks like the fourth grade is going on a trip.
This is Museum of Science.
But this is not an out of district trip, so, you know what I mean? So you don't have to approve that part of it. Right.
But we don't approve the, the field trip, we just approve the dollar.
So this must be the fourth grade must be going.
But the donation, you're talking about the kindergarten.
So kindergarten, we haven't accepted that donation yet and then we just approved the field trip, correct, yesterday. And then we approved the second grade trip, assuming an eight hundred sixty-seven dollar PTA donation.
Yeah, so I will check on that donation. I don't know what happened on the kindergarten. I, that wasn't even on the radar screen for me.
So we think that there's three, so.
So there's three trips.
Eight sixty-seven is different from this, because this is the fourth grade.
Yeah, this is the fourth grade.
Okay, I'm gonna figure that out. Okay, but we have a copy of this check, so I'm gonna make a motion to.
Accept.
Accept a generous donation from the PTA in the amount of eight sixty-five fifty for the fourth grade trip to the Museum of Science.
Yeah, so I'm gonna look for the K.
On April eleven, twenty eighteen.
Look for the K donation.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you very much for PTA for their generous support.
So I'm looking for a K donation and second grade donation.
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure all that out, yes, we will.
So the message got out there, so, you know, we're, we're gonna have to just be reinforcing it.
Right. Okay. Does anyone have any um subcommittee reports? Um, budget and finance met, the meeting minutes were in there.
Yeah, we haven't met otherwise.
We should probably get another.
We do have one.
Oh, we do have one, okay.
So, yeah. Governance, we have not met, which we have to, right, I think next week. Yeah, we do have a, have a.
The meeting, it's been canceled four times in a row.
I know, the weather has not cooperated.
Negotiations has met and is continuing to meet. Uh, our next meeting is next Thursday, the twenty-nine.
Did we set food services date?
No, but we gave him, we gave him the parameters.
Uh, safety, Pam, have you met?
I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
No, because it was a snow day.
Oh, correct.
It'll be on the next one, be April twelfth.
Okay, the superintendent evaluation committee?
I think the last time we met was public relations.
Public relations, yeah.
Right.
But I thought, there's another meeting set, scheduled, I thought it was on my calendar.
It's um.
Coming up. Maybe next week or the week after?
It's not, it's April tenth?
April tenth.
Okay.
What I have.
Okay. April tenth, okay.
Yeah, governance, oh, governance, we have April tenth and eleven. Do you have that? That's what I.
A busy day.
That's what I have on there.
But don't we have one next week?
We do have one. I don't have it on my calendar. The week of the twenty-sixth, you're saying?
Yeah. Okay, so, do you think it was?
Maybe not.
I didn't have anything, that's the next one I have. Okay.
So.
Yeah, I don't have anything on the twenty-sixth.
You said the eleventh.
April eleventh?
No, the tenth.
Oh, the tenth.
April tenth and eleven.
April tenth at eleven and April tenth at three fifteen.
So do you have that?
I have both of those.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I do just wanna let the public know too, that the next school committee meeting, which is on April twelfth, will start also at six thirty. Just in case.
Can I just say something about the Georgetown, the school building committee?
Sure.
Um, I just spoke to Ellie Singelwitz.
Yep.
What the status uh is right now.
And the closeout?
Yeah, the MSBA is conducting their audit and it's, it's going smoothly, but maybe a little slowly. Um, if they had any questions, the committee would meet to discuss them, but there are no questions. Um, there will be a, an MSBA board meeting in August and that's when they're going to approve the audit.
Okay.
So we will.
Can't be signed off until obviously that's.
It can't be signed off until then, so it won't be signed off until after that.
Yeah, and I think the town is concerned, because they're looking for that money.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not, we're doing.
No, I know, it just takes forever to get on the, on the board, board agenda.
Right.